What's the secret all this time without much money?
Just chain that around.
All right, welcome Peterborough Select Board meeting for February 21st, 2023. Tyler Ward, with me are Bill Kennedy and Bill Taylor, fellow Select Board members. We have Nicole McStay at the table here, Town Administrator. And the Bunch of Committee will be joining us at 5:30, right?
Yeah.
And we'll get that finalized. Tonight we'll start a public hearing, acceptance of unanticipated monies due to RSA 31, call 91B. And those are donations through a fund proposed contract with Block Power for Renewable Energy Services. And then we have some new business. We may go to approve the land acquisition capital reserve fund for the Harris Center, and another expenditure from trust funds, recycling, tire recycling costs. And later, we also have minutes to approve with the Bunch of Committee. So, I make a motion, we open a public hearing. RSA 31, call 95A, B, acceptance of money. All is big. All right, welcome. Dory, will you be speaking with us?
I will.
Excellent.
I can either sit or stand, doesn't matter.
Whatever you're more comfortable with.
Okay, I'll sit. So, hello everyone, my name is Dory Drackman. I am one of the co-coordinators of the Peterborough Renewable Energy Planning Team, or Prep Team, along with Bob Heron Smith. And we are here to talk a bit about a pilot project that we would like to do with a company called Block Power. There we go. So, what is Block Power? They are a leading national climate tech company that's focused on greening and particularly electrifying aging buildings. And so they, their history is that they started in Brooklyn by a man of color. They prioritize low-income neighborhoods in general, but especially for a small project like this, they will work in all neighborhoods. They do anyway, but they usually try to do the neighborhoods that need it the most first. They currently are working in 12 different states in several major cities, and they have the backing of some very deep pockets, including Goldman Sachs and Microsoft. They, the way their product works is that they offer a long-term lease package to weatherize buildings, install heat pumps and heat pump, hot water heaters. They can add solar, they can add induction stoves. And they do this with a package that requires no money down, there's no lien on the building, they have very reasonable monthly rates with savings over the term of the contract, which is usually, or they can make it as long as 15 years. So longer than usual in order to spread the money out further. They also, in their, in all of their projects, they use as much local contracting as possible. So today, we actually had a meeting with a representative from Block Power, meeting with the Prep Team, meeting with the town, and meeting with some local contractors who are interested in the work. They work very closely with community leaders because they know that we are the ones that know our community best and can guide the project to meet those needs. They work with all building types, so anything from single-family homes, multifamily homes, municipal buildings, small businesses, and they want to work in all buildings, hopefully to electrify all of them so that we can be saving on our carbon emissions. They also will provide funds for projects, so for instance, for marketing, which would be our primary expenditure in this kind of small-term, small-scale project. And so they will be able to fund that. This project will be their first project in New Hampshire. It will also be their first project in a rural area in, on the East Coast. It's also a first project in a state that does not have robust incentives. And the reason that they are really interested in doing this is because they're very committed to making this work everywhere. They don't want it to just be something that can work in certain places. Certainly, the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act this summer, which has about $370 billion to different programs that will combat climate change, has made this much more possible for them. We are proposing a pilot so that we can each kind of dip our toe into this. And so we're looking at 10 to 15 buildings through the end of the next fiscal year, with the idea that if both parties are happy with the results, we can re-up after that time. The Prep Team is willing and interested in managing the project so that it would not take, you know, staff time. There is for this pilot, a $5,000 administrative cost from Block Power, and we are asking to, for the town to accept a donation for that $5,000, and to authorize Nicole to sign the contract. And I believe that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the cost associated with these 10 to 15 buildings?
The cost to whom?
Well, I suppose the Peterborough, and Peterborough's taxpayers?
None, nothing.
So they're just going to upgrade these buildings for free?
No, they have this lease, they're going to have a lease for the building owners. It'll be paid for by the building owners through this long-term lease. That will be reasonable, stretched out over many years, and there is no cost to the town other than this $5,000 administrative cost, which we are able to pay for through donations.
So it's not just similar to say the Solarise program, if you remember that one from a few years ago, where it was putting solar panels in arrays up in the local area, but instead of a PPA, which is how most of those are funded, these improvements must instead be funded by a loan, a lease to the, from Block Power to the owner of the building, whether it's a red, you know, single-family home or apartment building, or a commercial entity.
If a town building were one of the buildings that became part of this project, then there wouldn't need to be, I mean, the town would then be responsible for paying that lease, but for other buildings, it's the building owner.
And the call, is there a cost associated with the plan that's put together? You know, they have to figure out what's wrong with the building and what upgrades would be needed.
Those would all be part of the package of the lease, so that, you know, they've got proprietary software to be able to identify which buildings might be, might get the biggest bang for the buck, called block maps. But, and then they would also bring in local energy auditors to figure out where the, where the needs are. But that would all get rolled into that lease package.
And what's in it for Block Power? Do they make a bunch of money off one end or the other?
They, they make some money, but not a huge, I mean, it's not a, it's not, you know, raking it in. They do have very, very large backers. They, they started during the Obama administration, and Obama thought it was an amazing concept, and so got very excited about it, and got a lot of really, really big companies with deep pockets to invest in it. And so, you know, places like Goldman Sachs and Microsoft. So they have some very big backers, and so they can afford to do the kind of work that they're doing. And they are really mission-driven. They really are doing this in order to be able to combat climate change.
Those backers are bound to be looking for a return on their investment, do you think?
Oh, they are.
They all want a return on their investments.
Yeah, this is, this is a for-profit company, and yes, their backers do, but it might not be the same as, you know, like, a Google in that kind of profit. It would be a somewhat smaller margin.
Makes sense. So one other question would be, like, what's, what's the downside risk to the town for signing up on this? And what, and I guess in the second part of that would be, why does the town have to be involved at all if it's just individual buildings and not municipally owned?
So normally, the administrative cost would be paid for by the town. We are making, we decided that we would like to donate that administrative cost, and so the, the contract is-
Who's "we"?
Prep.
The Prep Team.
The Prep Team.
Wow.
And so, so normally, it is, you know, the, the town, the municipality is responsible for helping out with the program. We are kind of stepping into that role for the town. I forget the earlier part of your question.
The downside.
Oh, the downside. So to me, it's, thank you.
The team were-
Yes. So the downside is if they don't do, do good work, and, and they don't follow through. And that's part of why we wanted to make it a very small scale, and in the contract, we can break the contract if we need to, given, I think it's a month's notice, maybe two months' notice. And certainly, the Prep Team, given how, you know, how committed we are to making this transition, we do not want to be involved with any kind of program that is not going to follow through, that will be disappointing to residents of the town. And so we are proceeding very cautiously, and so that's why we're doing it this way.
So that $5,000 is for the first year? There'd be another fee the second year, however, if you're selling it?
Yeah, if we, if it were renewed for a subsequent term, then, yeah, there would certainly be an additional fee, and it might be substantially more than $5,000.
Yeah, but it would also be substantially more than 10 to 15 buildings. In addition, we would look for other funding to, to help with that, that piece. There, there are different ways. There are, there are cities that have worked with different foundations to get funding for it, and the Kresge Foundation is one that the city of Ithaca has used to help with their administrative costs. So there is, there are other possible, possible ways to get that funding, but because this is so small, it's a pretty reasonable amount of money.
My understanding is that these leases last anywhere between 10 and 15 years, and at the end of the lease, the owners-
Yes.
-buy it for $1.
Buy their heat pump.
Buy their heat pump and whatever equipment was involved in the contract.
Yeah.
Which is kind of a deal, because a lot of these, a lot of its equipment is rated for 15-year lifespan, but they tend to last longer, so you can actually make money. And there is a crossover point where you're actually saving more money than what you would have spent on traditional electricity devices or, or oil, or cheaper oil, so and so forth, so. So it's very, very. And it tries to make the financing as painless as possible, you know, through a lease program, rather than having to lay out capital expenditures for equipment, so and so, if they're out the back.
And if there are people that don't want to do it through the lease, they want to just buy it upfront, they can.
Yep.
Or if they want a lease term that's shorter than 15 years, they can also do that.
Or finance it through a local bank.
Yeah.
And one other thing is that we did a similar kind of arrangement with the town with Kail Blue Dot, if you remember.
That's true.
Development of the Prep Plan itself, so.
I'm just curious what the, I don't, I'm not trying to sound negative, I'm just trying to, like-
Understand it?
Understand it.
We went through the same process.
Look, what's to stop anybody right now from, you know, going into all these individual companies that provide this service anyways, within just leaving Block Power out altogether?
Oh, they absolutely could. They wouldn't be able to avoid no upfront costs, and that's, that's a big part of this, is that you don't need to get over that initial hurdle of, this, this equipment is expensive.
Yeah.
And so this takes that hurdle away.
Good.
So it's an alternative, it isn't one-shot, it's all, you know?
Right.
Sorry, just interested in knowing how much research the Prep Team has done as far as the, you know, what Block has done in other towns, Ithaca, you mentioned.
Yeah, we've had a-
Have you had a chance to really do that?
Yeah, we have. We've, we have had a couple of conversations with Ithaca about, you know, their experience with Block Power, and, and they were very honest, you know, that there were, they gave us pros and cons, and so one of the biggest takeaways that we got is that the town or the Prep Team really needs to be in charge of the messaging, because what works in Brooklyn doesn't necessarily translate to working in Ithaca, and-
Peterborough.
Or Peterborough. And so there was, you know, they needed to kind of do some reparations there after some faux pas's. But even with all of that, they, we got from them, yeah, there've been some, some, you know, glitches there, but they're the only ones that are doing this work, and it's really important to, to our climate goals. And so they are, what they're doing is much, much more ambitious. They are committed to electrifying all of their buildings by 2030. So that's 6,000 buildings in the next seven years. So there, it's, it's huge. Yeah.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the Prep Team, Peterborough Renewable Energy Plan, 19, are all volunteers for the town. They've saved the town thousands of hours of work getting into all this. And also, just to make the statement clear, that nobody involved with bringing this to the board is invested in Block Power or any of the companies that they'll be pushing or the materials or apparatus, renewable energy apparatus, that they're selling, right?
That's absolutely correct.
The flow of money is actually reversed.
Yeah.
That'd be a tough question, a tough question not to answer that way, I mean, like this, we're like, so who here is invested in that, brother?
Well, but you would need to know that, if there was somebody.
Is there, is there a way that, that this could end up costing our, our town's administration time?
Um, well, it already has a little bit.
Yeah.
And we've needed to, you know, have conversations with, with Nicole and Danica about this, and they, Nicole was, Nicole and Bill were at, were at the meeting this morning. I think it's going to be fairly minimal.
Building inspector.
Yes, building inspector, there will be, you know, and, and then especially if there is a municipal building that would, you know, we've talked-
Be part of the program.
Yeah, be part of the program. If there is a, in the future, a planning assistant, energy coordinator, that person also might be, might be an asset to this, but we are fully prepared to, to manage the program.
So, Mary, very hard.
Two questions, if I may. Is this, is Block Power a publicly-held or privately-held company?
I don't know the answer to that. I think it's private.
I think it's privately held.
And the other question to follow up on Rick's, has the Prep Committee had any conversations with owners, building owners who are engaged in these leases, say in Ithaca or other towns?
So in Ithaca, there actually have not yet been any buildings that have been electrified through Block Power. And no, we have not talked to other, other building owners. I guess my feeling was that a lot of their work has been in large cities in apartment buildings, and I didn't know how, how transferable that would be. But I think it would be, that's a very good idea.
There are, there are building owners in Ithaca who have signed contracts to have Block Power do the work, but ironically, the passage of the IRA has delayed some of the work because they don't want to get into it and then discover that if they had waited a little bit longer, they would have been eligible for more incentives and would have saved more money on the project. So they have lined up a number of jobs, and they're waiting for clarity on how funds in the IRA will be administered.
Are we, are we committing to this contract right now?
Yes.
Or not? I'm just concerned, because when we started all the Prep conversation, it was like, is it going to cost the town anything, and then now we're proposing to hire a full-time employee for it?
Not for, not for this.
Well, no, not this specific, but prior to, before today's meeting, this was on the table that we're hiring somebody. And then, one of the arguments in favor of that was that they would be doing a lot of the work that you kind of just described there.
Well, I would say there, there are lots of other ways. I mean, you've seen the plan. I, I don't think that they need to be doing this contract. I think that there are lots of other pieces of the plan that that person will be very helpful in, in helping us meet our goals. As I said, the Prep Team is very committed to managing this project. We actually have someone on the committee who has a project management experience and has, has volunteered to be the project manager.
Okay. I mean, I, I really don't see any reason to avoid doing anything you possibly can in this direction, but this is the first that I'm hearing about this. And we're asking to, for a one-year contract and to accept a donation for something that I'm just here about tonight. If it seems like I'm a little standoffish, that's why.
I, I could understand that. I, and I know that we've been talking about it for a long time, so it's definitely something that we are, we've been asking some similar questions and have, have gotten to a place where we feel much more comfortable. And I, and quite honestly, today, when we got to meet with the, the representative from Block Power, that also was very, very helpful. So no need to apologize for feeling uncomfortable.
Well, I don't know if I'm apologizing, I'm just like, trying to make sure our bases are covered.
Absolutely.
Because I first heard about this.
Yeah, and so no worries, and I totally get why you might feel like uncomfortable, because it does kind of sound too good to be true, but I really think-
Right up until you started talking about the reparation parts out in Albany or whatever. Count that one.
Oh, they just, they, well-
It was just really communication problems.
It was a communication issue.
There wasn't, there wasn't work done that had to be undone, or there wasn't damage caused.
Absolutely, no, it was just, it was a, something dumb that they said.
All right. I was just gonna, I was just gonna add in that town attorney's reviewing the contract, and he's very comfortable with it.
So everybody's been dealing with this except for us.
Oh, I've been dealing with yours.
Carol Nelson, thank you. So one, I'm going to focus on the heat pump portion of it. Obviously, that would need to be inspected, right Tyler, by the town. So would that cost be covered by Block Power or the landlord?
The permit for it?
Yes.
Property owner.
The property owner?
Yes.
Okay, so they will have that expense. I don't know how much that costs.
The property owners will have many expenses if they, if they choose to go forward with this. What this is, is essentially a program to help property owners who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford these upgrades, be able to do so through a lease that Block Power would administer.
Right. We, we were told at the Affordable Housing Committee that there would be no upfront cost to the property owners.
Correct. Wouldn't be upfront, it'd be all built into the lease.
So they wouldn't have to pay for that building inspection?
Not upfront, it would be built into the lease.
Okay, built into the lease, thank you. And then, what if in that 15 years, the heat pump breaks or needs to be serviced? Did they pay for that expense?
The contractors would have, they would have O and M agreements with the contractors going into this, so that should one, should something break, there would be a person locally that would get called.
Okay. And I don't know anything about heat pumps, do they need to be serviced?
I just, I think everything needs to be serviced.
Yeah, so that cost is included in this lease.
I'm not sure if regular maintenance necessarily is, but-
During the, during the period of the lease, if the building owner chooses to go with Block Power's program, Block Power owns the heat pump, so they are responsible for servicing and maintenance and repair.
So they call, I call Block Power, hey, my, my heat pump's not working, I call Block Power? They may call an electrician and they-
I doubt, I think that they probably in the lease will say for, you know, for maintenance, call these local, local contractors.
Here's who has the contract.
Gotcha, okay.
If you chose to follow through with this, but opted for a fight, for a different form of financing, then in that case, the building owner would own the heat pump and then would be responsible for-
Yeah, I was just focusing on Block Power doing the lease. Yeah, thank you.
The, the more we talk about this, the more it comes up, and I hate to blue-labor any meeting, everybody knows that, but what happens if you go to sell your house after three years or five years?
Good question.
I mean, I, as being a person in the real estate business, I've run up against solar leases that were a massive challenge and in some ways eliminated the potential for a sale.
I believe that it could go with the house, printer member, do you remember?
Yeah, we did ask that specific question, and we got an answer, I was just about to look at it.
Thank you.
The document, but the lease goes with the-
Yeah, if somebody doesn't want.
They can pay it off.
Well, then, I don't know, if the heat pump gets pulled out, uh-
I think that was the answer, is that you could include it in the price of the house and basically pay it off the lease early.
Mm-hmm.
And now you own the equipment.
Right.
Or I believe you can accept the lease and continue the lease on it.
I'm getting there.
One more question? Dory Wild is looking.
Yeah.
What happens to the administrative costs? Have you envisioned that happening in year two, year three? Is Prep going to continue to pick that up? Is that going to end up being a town responsibility?
So beyond this contract, we don't know what, what, what else we might decide to do. If it goes beyond 10 to 15 buildings, that administrative fee will go up. And if it's, you know, high enough, then we will be looking at outside investment and outside support, like applying to the Kresge Foundation and, and trying to find other ways to, to meet that administrative cost.
As opposed to town expenses, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is a one-year contract?
16 months, yeah.
16 months, and you, the way you make it sound, there's escape clauses, Gradagans looked at it, so that's comforting. I mean, it's, I think it's fine, just so long as we don't all of a sudden find out that we have to re-up the contract and the administrative cost is $200,000.
No, it's not going to happen.
No.
Are there any other entities similar to Block Power that would want to do the same thing? And are we locked in the five, the fee here? What's stopping someone else from doing the same thing by just going door to door and asking?
Nothing.
So why does Block Power need the five, why do they, why do we need a contract with the town?
So they insisted on a contract with the town, because they, they want to have, they
want to know that the town is behind us as well. So for them, it's-
Isn't enough in the newspaper already that we're behind renewable energy in Peterborough?
I don't think they're getting our paper in Brooklyn.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if they're researching it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the resources that they will be putting into this project, I'm sure, cost them more than $5,000.
They said that, yes.
So they, they want to know that there is a commitment here and that it might lead to something more.
And it's quite possible they will look into 10 to 15 houses, come up with plans for every one of those houses, and the homeowner could turn around and say, no thanks, 10 to 15.
Yeah, but that doesn't, they haven't finished then. Yeah, but that doesn't, they haven't finished that. I mean, we want to actually electrify 10 to 15 houses.
Right, yes.
And there may well be more buildings than that that they'll examine and then the building owner might choose not to do it.
And so also to know our thinking, we are thinking, well, since we're going to be putting a lot of work into educating about this project, and we are actually hoping that, you know, more than 10 to 15 buildings can get electrified between now and the end of June 2024, we might be doing a weatherized campaign alongside it. So introducing, you know, homeowners to the various contractors that can do the different work because they want to just do, they want to own it. They want to do it in a different model. And that can happen parallel, in parallel to the Block Power program as well. So we see this as a way to kind of leverage getting more buildings weatherized and electrified.
So in answer to the question that was asked earlier and Block Power answering response to our asking that question before, if property is sold or transferred, lease is either bought out or transferred to. Most building owners expect that they would buy it out before they sell.
And then they can get the, get it in the asset price.
Then they own the equipment that's there, they sell it with the house and everybody moves on.
Well, I can tell you, if you're not planning on going for the full 15 years, that could be a super risky proposition if you were going to sell your house. Because not everybody wants to buy that stuff and not everybody's going to agree to take on payments that somebody else is committed to.
Well, that's why they can buy it out.
That's what they would buy out. These things, I mean, I'm just saying.
That's your only source of heat right there. You're basically buying this heat pump and then you're not using the burner anymore. So they want to buy that house, you know, with heat.
Yeah, have to buy this. Yeah, I understand. Right, just saying there's a risk. And I've seen it with this whole stuff. It was pretty dramatic a few times. I'm not saying that it'll be exactly the same way. I'm just saying there is a risk to having this on your, on your house.
Well, there is no lien on your house.
Yeah, so what happens if, I mean, there's a million scenarios. Say, I go through this whole plan and I have a lease on all the equipment. Then I sell my house and I forgot about telling the other company. What's their recourse after that? I've already sold the house. There was no lien, so they're not going to be alerted to me selling the house.
So if there's a default on a payment, they have the funding to be able to, I mean, certainly they will try to get funded, but they are able to, they've got the backing to be able to absorb that.
They have absorbs on defaults.
Yeah.
But a handful out of however many they've done.
Yeah, it apparently is very, very rare.
It really comes down to, just like anything else, I mean, there's personal risk control. As they're looking at Block Power, need to look at it carefully, make sure it works for them before they sign up. You know, I mean, if I know I'm going to sell my house in the next three to five years, I probably wouldn't sign up for something like this because there's really no, it wouldn't make sense for me to. But it makes a lot more sense for someone who's not planning on moving or a landlord.
A landlord, yeah.
I mean, that's really the goal of this program is actually to reach landlords who want to upgrade their buildings, you know, for the benefit of the tenants and themselves.
I understand it. I'm just saying it's a whole bunch of people in the world that have ended up selling a house they thought they were going to live in forever.
True, absolutely. And so that's why if you can then buy it out and then you can recoup it in the price of the house.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else have another question? All right.
I think I'll close that public hearing and...
You're going to come to a conclusion?
I'm going to call, ask where, if anyone wants to make a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the funds and sign the Block Power contract. We call.
And also to repurpose a little bit of $1,000 left from the Palewood Dot.
Oh, thank you.
Any funds that were donated towards Palewood Dot, we'd like to put that towards this contract as well. Thank you.
And that was one that was also donated from the Palewood Dot. All right, I'll second that. What was it there? All right, yeah, thank you for the work and thanking all our questions. I'm sure more will come up.
Yep, we're happy to answer them as best we can.
Yeah, if anybody that's watched, if anybody's watching. You're on air, it's just right there. They can contact the town office and leave it to you guys.
Great.
I don't know where you people find the time.
We're retired.
Yeah, really, exactly.
Even still.
Yeah, we work full-time in our hiring.
The pay is not as good as it used to be.
It's true.
Yeah.
So do we need to make a motion to close that public hearing?
I'd close it by order of...
Tyler's pissed.
Tyler's taken over.
Aren't there other businesses? Well, that was just that public hearing. So right now, we have, we're going to hear from Francie von Martin's from the Conservation Commission.
Oh, I got that too. I just wanted to start with a really pretty picture. It's a really great picture.
It is gorgeous.
We're going to approve the land acquisition capital reserve fund.
Where is that? Got to stay around.
I have a meeting.
Show to egg.
I have a community power meeting.
Where do you want me to start, Francie?
It's a community power meeting?
Number one that I sent you?
No, it's with him.
Oh, the Block Power.
Yeah.
We'll get out of that. Thank you, everyone. It's the history of, those are the first two, that and the next page. Yeah, that looks familiar. So Francie von Martin's Conservation Commission. It's been too long since I've been here for this purpose. The Land Acquisition Capital Reserve Fund, a little bit of history there. 2002, it was established and the master plan called for the wisdom of the select board to create an open space committee to figure out how best to prioritize spending the money. And you did that. Here's the history of how funds have been sent in the open space committee. It was a small fund to begin with and then for about 10 years, the open space committee would bring a warrant article to town meeting that would incrementally add to the fund, which the open space committee did. And these are expenditures. In the warrant article, it was in addition to partnering with other entities like land trusts to conserve open space. Well, could you do the next one? The open space committee was charged with prioritizing, getting a systematic process to prioritize various parcels in town based on natural resources. And this is 13 points that properties were scored on. The open space committee scored every property in town larger than 25 acres. And just to give you a sense of what natural resources are, they're both water resources, wildlife, trails for people, scenic, road frontages from public ways. Could be scenic from a river paddling down the Cantucca or driving along. And the property that I'm about to talk about scored in the top 10 of the ranked properties in town. And looking over since 2004, a number of those top 10 properties have been conserved and there was funding support for those. And that's really great news. So the system's working. And your coagents to expend the capital reserve fund, land acquisition capital reserve fund with the conservation commission, last, at the January meeting, the Concom, Eric Masterson from the Harris Center came and presented the reasons why the Harris Center would accept a conservation easement on this property. And they ran it through their system and it scored. It's quite a responsibility that a land trust takes on in perpetuity. A conservation easement deeded to the land trust, that means they have to make sure that the development restrictions are being honored. And so that's an annual expense. And they request landowner donation to support that. And in this case, the landowner, it's called the Leahy Conservation Easement, which the next, let's see, maybe, maybe do the next one. We're in the northeast quadrant of town. There is a greenfield town line coming right down here. And so 90, my notes, is it 122 acres, I think. The Denise Leahy property there in Peterborough, she contributed $5,000 and the Conservation Commission approved a matching $5,000 to the Harris Center for easement expenses. One of the criteria in judging the value of a property is connection with existing conserved land. And it makes sense. If you have 120 acres that's surrounded by development, it doesn't score as highly in terms of watershed, water resources, wildlife habitat, scenic. So it scored very high that way. If you can back up one, the State's Wildlife Action Plan has a statewide ranking, color-coded. And the river, the stream corridor that Nicole showed as the first slide, that's the stream corridor there and it's tier one. And I don't know what percentage of the state is tier one, but it's not a huge percentage of the state. So that's, tier one is number one. Tier three is supporting landscape. I have no idea what tier two is, probably. I don't know. I should know, but I don't. And also there's regional corridors, cardigan to, well, there's regional, it also scores high that way. So it's in terms of the town, the state, the region, this is an important addition to protected open space.
Can I ask you a quick question?
I think that's...
It's in two parcels. These are, these are property owned by the Leahy family?
Yes.
And there are two parcels?
There's the parcel to the east, to the right is in Greenfield, so we're not talking about that.
So we're not using Peterborough funds?
No, no, no. And what's in between is our buildings, houses, barns. And there's nothing on 122 acres. I think it's 122 in Peterborough and Ward in Greenfield. 122 acres in Peterborough and 24 in Greenfield. I think that's all I have to say.
Francie, could you locate a little better for me, like streets or roads nearby?
Yeah.
Accessive? Is that a road?
If you're out, going out Sand Hill Road, very scenic, maybe the big, the big unfragmented one, yeah. This is Sand Hill Road coming out here. And then there's a corner, the Thomas easement's there. The Thomas family donated the Wapak National Wildlife Refuge as New Hampshire's first national wildlife refuge. And then offspring, Thomas and Marshall, this was the Marshall family.
So it's kind of in the bottom left?
There, it's way down here. But that was also Marshall, Thomas.
Right, I know that. I was just trying to picture where...
Francie, is that bordering Holt Road?
Holt Road, just going up there.
Yes.
Yes. And this is General Miller Road there.
And that's East Mountain Road to the bum?
East Mountain Road going down here, yeah.
Anybody in the audience?
Is that other girls, is there a girls camp up on that road? Is there a girls camp up there?
There's Brentwood, is it? It's a...
Oh, it's in Greenfield?
It's in Greenfield. And it's, I think it's for urban kids.
Okay. I missed the very beginning of your presentation, but I wondered how much of Peterborough is now under conservation?
I maintain that file.
Round figures. It doesn't have to be...
And the master plan set an immediate goal and I think I just upped it to 30%. But there's a caveat on that, that, and here's the open space map. Some of these parcels, Vermont Field, Vermont Field as an example, doesn't have a legally binding in perpetuity.
So in general, are we making, are we, are we reaching our master plan goal? Are we low, high?
Yeah, the, the master plan goal, 2004, said, set a goal of immediate goal of one-third. However, there is an asterisk there that New York City is like 40% conserved. So it matters what's going on. You can't say, it's the quality of what you're conserving rather than the acreage. And so that's why the prioritizing grid was developed, that in terms of town money going towards and town energy volunteers, we want to make sure that it's high priority natural resource. So this grid really helps. And then they do outreach. The open space committee has done outreach to property owners with highest. And there's the scenic tier one. You're looking at state tier one there. I agree. That's definitely a top-tier deal right there.
Carl, hi, this is Carl Mezino. This is near my house. Last time I went up there, this land was marked, no trespassing. Is that going to be considered?
There's no, it's not. Well, that question came up.
The east-west line was?
Eric Masterson who walked the boundaries, that question came up at the Conservation Commission meeting in terms of, is there public access? The conservation land remains privately owned. And very typically, there is a clause saying that a land right, in terms of reserved rights, the landowner reserves the right to post the land because this is in perpetuity. And we have conservation land, we don't post it. Eric Masterson walked the boundaries of the easement parcel and says he did not see any signs. So that's what I have to go on. And my, as someone who volunteers a lot in land conservation, I, if landowners had to allow public access in perpetuity, very few would put conservation easements on their land because you just, you don't know. Some people have, well, I'll just, you can imagine, I mean, what's, what's the future world going to be in terms of people? So that's my, landowners putting the conservation easement on their land are giving up, in this case, a lot of money in terms of marketability. And so to me, personally, they're heroes. And if they want to post their land, that's got to be their choice.
Anyone else?
It took me a while to get there. And the public benefit, you do get a charitable donation because the... because Washington has deemed the value of conserving special natural resource land is the same as giving a donation to a nonprofit. And so you're entitled to a deduction. For that, you get an appraisal and what the value you're giving up, you get to write off. However, that amount is never comparable to if you wanted to develop the land that you could get.
Do you have a motion to expend these funds from capital reserve?
What was it again? $5,000?
The total amount in there was 159?
159.
So this would be 154.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we expend those funds.
All right, I'll second it. All is good. Great, thank you, Francie. Thank everyone.
Thank you.
All right, can we just burn these tires? Bring them over to the whip switch and burn them right in the road like they do?
They start doing it right and share them. We don't even have to truck them out.
There'll be a $6,000 fine if you do that. So this is pretty straightforward.
Very straightforward, as you see it.
Yeah. So in the interest of time, I don't know if we have any questions. Do we do this as a regular thing? I think the motion that we approve the expenditure of $6,000 for tire recycling cost?
Sure. Yeah, sure. I mean, we collect that anyways.
Yeah.
For that barrier.
Excellent. All right. Yeah, thanks, everyone. Now, it's time for a 5:30 joint.
Let me take two minutes.
Yeah, right.
In conversations with Andrew Osterman this past week, he came up with an idea. He represents a younger generation of people in this town. He says it's very difficult for young families to attend a Wednesday evening meeting of the town, of school nights and the whole ball of wax. So he suggested that we actually move town meeting to Saturdays. Saturday morning at ten or something on that order. And I thought I'd throw that out there. Give him credit for it, he isn't here to take it. But, and the people that I have talked to so far have said, yes, that's a good idea. So now, we don't have to necessarily vote on it today, but we have the power to change the date of the hearing.
We've got, you've got a couple of weeks to make that decision. But then that decision really needs to be made somewhere.
Right. Well, I'm suggesting maybe at the next select board meeting, we can vote on it this year and it would be for next year.
No, no, you can assign it. Yeah, you have the opportunity to change that date. What I've put on the warrant is just what the town has done by practice for the last, since 2007, when we moved out with the charter. So, and our practice has been to hold the deliberative session on the Tuesday, the first Tuesday of April. You can do it anytime between the first Tuesday and the first Saturday of April, according to state law. The same, you have to have the ballot voting on the second Tuesday of May, but then you can have the open session on the Wednesday through Saturday of May, following the ballot session.
And when that was adopted, the reasoning behind seven o'clock at night, weeknight was?
Was, I think it was...
So those damn kids didn't go?
Well, it was, I think it was threefold. One of them was, was that, it was thought that it was going to be easier for people to get to rather than giving up a day on the weekend to go to. It was also thought that, since we were putting so much onto the ballot, we wouldn't need nearly as much time to hold the open session. So we could do it in an evening, which has been true to this point. And lastly, I think it was also thought that, well, you know, if we hold it on a Wednesday night, no one wants to stay up that late. So we'll be sure that it won't take, it won't be only for six hours, which also has so far held true.
I've had people ask me the same thing and bring it up the same way. And I said, "Would you go anyways if it was a Saturday?" And they're like, "Well, no, not really." "I'm just saying, for the sake of complaining about something."
When did, we used to have it on Saturday. We did for a long time.
Yeah, traditionally, it was always on a Saturday, yeah.
Before it changed to a charter. So Andrew, which you know I support that idea, if that's the open session, can go to that first Saturday in April, and now you just read that we can make a deliberative that Saturday in May, why not do that?
Do both.
Yeah.
We certainly could. I mean, that's, it's entirely up to the selectmen. However, they want to warn it, however, they want to schedule it.
Leslie?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you guys recall, but a young father stood up in town meeting last year and said the same. His wife couldn't attend, because I couldn't get a babysitter.
Yeah, and then he had to...
He was holding his paper and picking up something.
Yeah.
Didn't he also recommend daycare? Yeah, I don't...
Well, you know, back in the day, they used to provide daycare. They used to have hot dogs out in the lobby, you know, the whole ball of wax. But that's when we, it was all...
So can I just make the decision?
You can if you want, if you want to right now. You've got, you can do it tonight, you can do it another day.
So skateboarders come down. Want to try it? Would it hurt to try? Yes, Francie?
You're going to lose as many people as you're going to gain. It would be, I will just throw that out, but, so, it's a tough one.
I agree. I think it's a heavier decision than this.
All right, let's think about it.
Do you want to poll the people?
I was going to say that before you make the decision, you ought to see what's happening on those Saturdays. If there's any reason why you wouldn't move it then.
Like a big basketball game or something?
I don't know. Children in the arts.
That actually...
Could be a Red Sours game when we lose half of them.
Well... All right, anyone else to open? Send all your thoughts to Nicole.
No, thank you.
If she could access her town.
My email.
Put her on the Peterborough Facebook page and find her with people, really.
There we go.
That's a great...
I think you need a little research.
I agree.
A little bit. So maybe it's a little late for this?
Do a poll.
Actually, I think I've got a couple of weeks.
$6,000? Is Andrew going to hang out at the transfers, the recycling center and ask people? That's a good straw poll. All right. April 8th, by the way, is the day before Easter. Something to think about.
Yeah, that's a problem.
What's the problem? The proposed Saturday for the deliberative session was the day before Easter.
We already announced the schedule. Anyways, we change it then.
All right.
To Easter.
Good thoughts. All right, so next up, we have our joint budget and select board meeting. We're going to hear the end of the review of the budget. Draft warrants in 2023, thank you. And two minutes, we're prepared for seven. Budget committee, you want to join us up here?
Yeah, I know, but I'm sure I'm not. It doesn't say on the line.
Small detail.
He does teach.
All right, ready to get started? Carl, would you like to introduce the budget committee?
Sure. Preparing to sit back there is Mandy Cyber from Budget Committee. Also sitting nearby, we have Chair Allison Lewis. Front row here, we have Donnie Parker, sitting next to Lon McIntyre. And on the table here, we have Merrick Clark and Rick Lester and Carl Mazzino.
So we have, we're most likely here from Lily Gilligan, our finance director, and I see you have some for little X here. And great, so let's get started.
Really, the reason why I was hoping that we would hold this meeting is just to make sure that the Budget Committee and the Select Board had a chance to review the draft of the warrant, the articles, and had taken some, you know, had some time to digest the budget and come back with any feedback that you might have.
Well, great news, I've got some laid out. All right, you want to just cut right to it then? I personally want to say, I mean, I want to say that I don't appreciate everybody's work going into it and how hard it is. And I think in a perfect world, if everything went just as according to, it was laid out for us, that'd be great. But it'd be a whole lot of people that really can't stomach the whole thing. This is such a huge portion of our town that's really struggling to pay their bills. And this is all as written, it would be really, really brutal. Also, some things have changed since the fall in some pretty significant ways in terms of, what is it? Consumer price indexes, fuel costs, electricity costs. So, is Ellie just watching from home?
She is.
I have notes on this, I can just give her. But I have a few things that I'm proposing in order for me to be able to support the budget. The first one being adjusting the cost of living in merit to 4% cost of living and 2.7% merit, which would make it 6.7. I'm proposing, I mean, I also agree completely with the premise and the theory behind capital reserves and saving money for things. But doing it all in one year is a little hard. So I'm suggesting that we drop the fire apparatus and equipment fund by $100,000 to $275. The fleet management capital reserve fund down by $100,000 to $275. The bridge culverts, the dams, one, down by 150. The rec equipment, down by 25. And I mean, we can work on the schedules for how, how the, you know, the plans are scheduled for replacing equipment beyond this. But, you know, like one of the things, for instance, on the rec department budget is a brand-new heavy-duty pickup truck in a few years. And there's never, in the history of town, I don't think, have we bought a brand-new pickup truck for the rec department that would sit in the parking lot. Plenty that get cycled through the highway department that could wind up there. I would ask that each department head go back through their budgets before we have our deliberative session and see if there's anything that's come down since the fall. When, I mean, everybody started working on these budgets like five months ago. So it's pretty hard for those numbers to all be still accurate, whether they be up or down at this point. And see if, you know, like, if they can work with us a little and see if there's something that they could cut back. I know that the premise behind you asking everybody, Nicole, was that they present a budget that provides the same amount of services last year without cutting anything. What do you mean? And I appreciate that, that there were some, you know, a bunch of additions in staff and so forth, so. And then back to what I was saying at the beginning, you have an accurate review, possibly quotes of current fuel, heating oil, you know, on-road diesel, off-road diesel, electricity quotes. And I've already asked and started the conversation to see if Fidium could provide our service for anywhere near less or considerably less than Comcast. And I got that conversation started. I haven't heard where it's gone since then. But that's what I'm proposing.
So I guess my, instead of sort of picking some of those things and saying, you know, because we don't really know the ramifications of what it would mean in out-years by cutting certain capital reserves, it might be better to give the town administration a number or a percent that you would like to lower it and let those, and let them decide what makes sense. I should have started by saying, I agree with you that there's probably, there is, I'm sure, some fat in the budget. My overall comment is that I'd love to see an initiative where the town department heads take a really good look at some of those fixed costs, like, as you said, the wireless connectivity costs, and really come back to us, because it's too late now, really to talk about, why is this so expensive? Instead, I'd love to hear, for instance, from FOSH to say, you know, "We really looked at this, and I called four different providers this year, and this is the best number I can do," instead of saying, "This is the number." Because it's late to be asking that. Well, by the time it gets to us, it's really too late for us to ask those questions and have any action taken. But to get back to, I got a little off topic, but get back to Bill's comments. I do think it would be constructive to say, "We don't think the town can stomach this number, and we think they can stomach this other number." And let the town administration pick.
Yeah, I wasn't just going just randomly picking stuff.
No, I didn't think, but it's hard for me to say whether I can, I agree with that or not, if, since I don't have the capital improvement budget kind of stuck in my head, I don't really know what the ramifications of each of those individual cuts would be.
What was the roll-up though for those cuts that you suggested? Do you have a bottom line total that you're cutting?
I didn't add it up, no.
So Leslie's point, I think, you know, if it's, let's say it was a million dollars, just for a number, and then go back to town and say, hey, where, you know, do we need to still prioritize? And where can we cut even deeper perhaps?
I also think, you know, one of the reasons why we bond so much, we have bonded so much, you know, as we discussed at the beginning of this process, is that over, you know, as a chair of capital improvement for four or five years, you know, we were often told to do that. And then when it really came down to it, when we had to actually buy the piece of equipment that we were supposed to have been saving for, we end up having to do a lease agreement or bond or something like that, because we never did save that money. And so to turn, turn our philosophy from bonding whatever we need to this capital improvement, if we can sell that to the town. We just have to have the right message for the town and say, you know, "You have to take this one-time hit, because we don't want to bond anything anymore, and it's not healthy for us to be bonding so much." And I think, I think the town would buy that. Instead of, instead of saying, "Well, let's do half of it this year and half of it next year," or some, you know, having some organizing principle that isn't this, I think a one-time shift can be, can be messaged correctly.
I agree with you. The issue is that this is, this schedule of costs is, I mean, there's a summary of the capital improvement plan, and it's every year. So it's not just a one-off. It's all the money saved this year.
But it's the increases, a one-time big increase. And then it would smooth out, right?
Well, I mean, it'll be the same technically every year that you're spending.
Right, but we wouldn't have a percent increase.
It won't hurt as bad as the first year.
Right.
And so we, we had a lot of infrastructure and upgrade costs that were coming at the town no matter what. And there were financial crises, and there were hard times for people. And bonding got us through all those times in a clever way in that it kind of allowed a great pool of people to pay off a big bill over a long period of time. And I do agree, we're at the point where we've done most of those. And this capital improvement plan is the way to go forward. But we're kind of also in a similar situation with people and the hard times and inflation raising and the cost of goods and that sort of thing. I kind of agree with that, but at the same time, I appreciate how the capital improvement plan go. So I don't know if I'm going to go with that.
First of all, I think that's a very interesting proposal. I think I've seen that kind of proposal come before at this stage of the thing before. So we need to think about a lot more. But having just heard you run through it, there are two areas that seem to me to be large. One was cutting back on the cost of living. The change in salaries was a big part, as we saw in the presentation that Nicole made before. When we looked at the big items, that was one of the big items. Not the big one was debt, but that's not something we can do anything about. We have debt. So the reason I bring that up is that, one of the main reasons why we're increasing the, we're proposing to increase the pay for people so that we can keep the people we have. I think the way you determine how much to pay people is partly being fair and partly being what the market is going to bear. partly being what the market is going to bear. And the market is tight, as we saw in the exposition last time. So, I would worry that if we don't continue to, uh, pay our employees in a way that we think is, that they think is appropriate, we're going to lose them. I remember in particular, Tyler's always remarking on the quality of the employees that we have in this town, and I want to make sure that he keeps saying that.
And there are three sizable positions open right now, that have, have they had any hits, anybody applying for these three?
The, well, there's.
Recreation.
Recreation has not broken. There's actually.
There's not four open positions.
Yeah, yeah, there's four open positions. Finance, fire, rec, police officer, and wastewater treatment. So, we have five, actually.
Do you have HR as well?
HR is the finance position.
So, my view of this is not a terribly well-informed view, but I would expect that when the town reviews the proposal that Bill's just brought us, they take into account what evidence they have on the state of the market to see what effect, uh, being tighter on our, our salaries we have. On the subject of the, holding back on some of the reserves, our reserve funds, uh, that's just putting off when we pay for these things. It's not smoothing as much as was proposed, uh, proposed originally. I'm worried about putting it off to, so that next year becomes larger, and next year is likely to be a much more difficult year than this year, in terms of getting support for, for what the request is, because next year we're going to be confronting the potential of a big expenditure on the fire station. So, I, I can't really comment on any of these ideas, been good or bad, I can comment on the fact that the proposal is good, to have a proposal like this insofar as we did concrete, uh, this is the things that we're looking at. But I'm, uh, I'm just worried in, in both cases, that there are some things that really need to be looked at before we can decide whether we're going to do it.
And do we have enough time to have another meeting with the budget committee before, and discuss another stuff, or is that not enough time, or do we have to do it at deliberative session?
Oh, no, you still have the budget, the public hearing coming up, too, that's what.
Well, I'm only one person in this whole entire group.
Well, you raised great point.
So, we're, I'm proposing, I've been looking at this stuff, you know, for as long as any of us have. These are some things I'm proposing that I think can be worked out. Uh, I mean, the cost of living and keeping employees, every employee for the town, or at least all the ones that I'm pretty familiar with, and that's a lot of them, know that I'm 100% supportive of them, and don't want to see them go. But if you can make a phone call to any business, anywhere, any municipality, and say they haven't lost somebody because they went to get paid more somewhere else, it's everywhere. Everybody has holes in their, in their staff levels. I, I mean, we're looking at the, probably the biggest budget, administrative budget increase in the history of town, first of all, and couple that with the biggest increase in capital improvements in the town's history. It's rough, and there's a lot of people that are just right on the edge, and there's a lot of people that don't care, because these types of numbers don't really mean much in your, you know, overall existence. They mean a ton in mine, I can tell you that much.
Mary. A couple of things, I completely support what Carl said regarding the employee COLA and merit, and I think the data that Nicole presented, uh, on the difficulties and the surrounding towns, how our salaries are not competitive, you know, on a number of levels, so I, I think that is a concern in terms of retention and attraction of qualified staff. And I guess a question for Lily, and I don't know if this is feasible or not, I know you carefully plotted out the capital reserve expenses, expenditures, and how those work, and I completely agree that moving in that direction as opposed to the bonding, uh, the bonding is a thing of the past, at least until other factors change dramatically like interest rates. But is there a way to, number one, prioritize some of the, um, capital reserve expenditures, and to perhaps spread things out so that it's, the, the impact is, um, flatter and more spread out, or does that not get us what we need?
My presentation with regards to, for example, the public works fleet capital reserve, uh, was that they have been postponing and postponing and postponing, and now their vehicles are 20-plus years old.
But that, that's my point about prioritizing, there has to be some priority.
So, that would be something that I would not recommend pushing out, uh, but, uh, there, you know, there are areas where, uh, some of the saving going forward is for purchasing FY 31 for a new fire truck, um, that, you know, perhaps that could be, uh, pulled back this year and pushed into, but I would have to look at all of those individually. Had I known that this was going to be presented, I could have, um, done some analysis, but...
No, it's not fair that we're springing this on you, sort of.
There are.
That's not we, it's me. I mean, that's fine, and I, and it, when you go through the list, I mean, if, if I'm a department head anywhere, and this sucks to be, for me to be in this position, because I love those guys, and I'm like, all about the work that they do, but if you ask me as a highway department, or any single department, hey, what do you, what do you need and when? Am I going to say, well, they just asked, what am I going to need? You know, like, I, I've never approached my daughter at Christmas time, and I'm like, what do you need, except for really, what do you need? You know, there's, there's a difference. And I'm sure that, I know that some of those trucks can last longer, I know that, you know, I, I, I know it feels like it's gonna, this comes off like an attack on everybody and all the work that everybody's done, and I, that's a risk that I'm taking, and I knew that it was a risk. And it, it doesn't make any difference, I'm also talking for 70% of the town that just isn't retired with steady income or whatever. There's a whole bunch of people that live in apartment buildings around here, whose rent has gone insane over the last two or three years, and a, the three dol-, you know, say, let's just round numbers without any arguing about where I came up with the number. If there's a $3 per thousand increase in our tax rate to accomplish everything that we think we need to accomplish, that's going to translate to everybody's rent going up even more. And there's a lot of people that are just barely making it, and we have to take them into account when we're sitting at this table today. That's all. I mean, we talk all, all day about it, for a while, but there's one thing we can do right here to actually chip away at them.
Leslie, Carol, get to you.
And again, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'll go after you.
Um, you know, the other way to look at this is to take a much harder look at what we think we need as opposed to what we really need to run the town. You know, we, we often talked, when I was on capital improvement, about vehicle creep, you know, and I, I don't know, I'm not an expert, so we take the advice of the department heads, but if, but that's the other way to look at it, you know, is our, are the things we need really what we, you know, what you said about your daughter and Christmas? What do you want, what do you really need, you know, and so, um, and again, that's not for this year, because we don't start talking about this till very late in the process, but it could be that the select board challenges Nicole and her staff to really, really parse what they're spending and come back with some, some other solutions, or at least, you know, we tried and we didn't see it.
Okay, that was number six on my question.
Yeah.
What you just said.
Try harder to not spend money. Yeah, but, you know, and again, the analogy of your, you know, of, the Christmas analogy is not a good one, because nobody here is, is presenting a wish list of the things they, they just, cool toys they want. Um, and I, I would never suggest that when we talk about, do you really need all these vehicles, because, as I said, I'm not the expert who has to run the DPW. But that's the other way to approach it. If, if the capital improvement funds are too painful for the town to bear, the answer is, you don't get as much. So, that's the other way to look at it for 2024, really.
Carol?
And isn't that what Bill's suggesting, is cut back some of, not all, you're not saying take everything away from capital improvement, you're saying cut some parts of it out, right?
Or back.
Or back, yeah, and I appreciate the fact that you did go line by line, I, I do appreciate that you went to that level of detail. But I also think it's counterintuitive to say that we've got people just on the line of, you know, if, if the tax rate goes up and their rent goes up, that they could be homeless, but then say, you're not going to get a COLA, and you're not going to get a merit increase, because those people do live in town, not all of them, but some of them do. So, me personally, I'd rather see the merit and the COLA stay and cut other, other places.
Yeah, I, I never said eliminate COLA and merit.
You said take it down, and I'm saying, don't take it down.
Yeah.
Here you are.
I guess Leslie raises an important point, and what it brought to my mind is Seth's presentation, though just as we are moving away from bonding and more toward the capital reserve fund, he gave a lot of examples of how they are taking more work into DPW and having fewer external contractors cross-training the staff in a lot of areas, and so, that, again, is a balance. And it's not as if they need, or they, the, the trucks that they're, they are using are wish list trucks, those are trucks that are being used to maintain roads and to plow and so forth, that aren't being contracted out. So, again, it's, it's a change in approach, which we think is benefiting the town, although in the near term, it's a little bit more costly than we all like to see.
I, I knew that this was going to happen, I knew it was a risk of me even bringing this up directly, and that's fine, I, I knew it, and it's happening. I'm not saying that, that it's my way of the highway, I'm only one person here, and you, everybody can just sit and say that, like, yeah, but it's fine, whatever everybody says, and just spend everything just as though it's, as it's presented, and it's usually, that's the way it's happened in all of our budgets, because they've been so tight. This one just happens to be massive. And, I, I mean, nobody had, everybody can come up with their excuses and, you know, be on TV saying, but the, the people that work for us, and these guys work harder, like, those guys all know that I, I understand how hard they work, I talk to them all the time. There's no personal attacks here, I'm not signaling out this department or that department. I, I support them, but I, I was, I was elected by 60, well, not 6,400, I guess, but to represent 6,400 people.
44, 52% of the people.
Well, and that was only of the ones that voted down.
I don't think anyone's, I don't think anyone's mad.
I mean, I'm.
Bill, I think you're being a little defensive, I think you're bringing up some great points, and I think we're having some good discussion there.
Yeah, I was getting defensive, but I knew this was going to happen, and like, I don't need to hear reasons why I'm wrong. Everybody, we already have, we already have a proposal, and everybody could vote on it as though they want to.
And these items are called out in, in their own warrant articles, right, in the warrant article for these capitals.
Some of them are, are combined, so.
Some are combined, so the voters do have a chance to not, to vote no on some of these, some of these.
I mean, a lot of the, the ones that Bill's talking about.
I just want to see if the first budget that was ever voted down.
Right there, Article 5.
But Bill, I think of all the people that have spoken tonight, are saying, hey, you raised some really good points.
Yeah, but you're wrong.
No, we're saying, let's look at it more closely.
No.
No, I have the conversation now, rather than.
And maybe there's something in between this and what you're saying, you know, and maybe that everyone, you know, compromised and agreed.
Well, it's the nature of negotiation, but if I knew that was going to happen, I'd have started lower.
So, why don't we, um, you know, I think we can all agree it's a really massive number, and we do have another, at least another opportunity to have a meeting before the public discussion, right?
We don't actually have a meeting scheduled next week, we could schedule something for next week, you could.
So, what if we did challenge you to take down the budget by some percent, and then come back with your cuts?
So, or, I guess, you know, that's where I'm going to ask for some delineation, a lot of what Bill was talking about is CIP, is CIP dollars, and those are separate warrant articles. Um, a lot of them are here in Article 5, um, you know, there's a little bit more elsewhere in here, um, but most of what he's talking about is, is in Article 5, except for, um, the fuel, um, we talked about that.
Way of roadway.
Gretchen is.
You've got ambulance.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, we have the fuel things, um, those are in the operating budget that Bill talked, called out. Internet, I know FOSH hasn't, we don't have any definitive numbers to work with yet to talk about different internet services, but he's been working with Fidium to see what the, you know, how, what the build-out for all of our, our buildings would be, um, and.
And COLA.
COLA, and I was getting to that, the, the biggest one is the COLA.
I think it's important to target reductions, instead of a, a sweeping, everybody try to take your percentage off, because in large part, I agree with everybody's department budgets. And I know that they're not trying to spend extra money just for the fun of it. Yes, it was a bad analogy, the Christmas thing, but, it was like, immediately popped in my head, you know, like, what, what might you need? And if you go to the CIP committee with a list of things that, when you wish they were replaced, would it have been, been different if they said, how long can you make these last, these vehicles last? Maybe their presentation would have been different, I don't know. But, I, I mean, I, I don't want to do a, I don't think it's appropriate to do a sweeping, you know, percentage reduction, because a lot of these budgets can't afford to have a reduction on them, because they're already as tight as they can be. But targeted things that we know about. Next minute, go ahead, I'll stop.
What's the select board position on, I always get the, uh, fund incorrect, the un-reserve fund, or the reserve fund, or the, we have 2 or 3 million or 4 million dollars out there, what's your position as far as taking some of that money and helping?
The fund balance?
The fund balance, thank you.
Fund balance, yeah.
Does the select board come to a decision as far as how much fund balance they want to push, or when does that happen, when you make that decision?
It happens later in the year.
Yeah, usually, you can either use it to offset some of the warrant articles, or the selectmen can use it to offset the tax rate.
The CIP originally, when we first met, we suggested using up to a million dollars of that money towards this, and then I think later on, we were told that the select board already made a decision to push a lot of that money there, but then I think that conversation kind of stopped, and then, Nicole, in your presentation last year, last, uh, time we met, you said, hey, theoretically you could have used up to 500,000. I'm asking, can we use a lot more to really help, you know, address a lot of the points Bill was making?
I can start to address some of that, because there's a danger in that, because we don't know what we're going to need for fund balance. I mean, Lily's expressed that our fund balance can be a lot lower, but we don't know what might happen, and should this budget get proposed, or get voted through as presented, when the actual, when the tax rate setting time comes around, we may need to use a bunch of it. I'm not, I'm not, you know, in order to offset a really, really huge increase, and it's probably, you know, it's, it's feasible that that's going to happen, we do it almost every year anyways. I'm not opposed to using some of it to offset some of these increases, uh, at all, once voted through, but I don't want to, I don't want to commit to that before we even have a budget that we've all agreed to, because we don't know what the impact is going to be.
Lily, can you just speak a little bit more about where we're at right now, or where, where going to be, just very generally?
We have approximately 1.2 million dollars available on fund balance that could be utilized, uh, either in, as Nicole said, uh, against warrant articles, uh, or by the time we get to next fall, we'll be adding fund balance on, uh, July 1st, when it's determined how much money of this budget we did not spend, which would add to fund balance, and how much more money we may have over-received in the projected revenues. So, those two numbers, and if we under-received in revenues, it would then reduce that fund balance, uh, figure. So, the, um, the expectation is that there'd be at least 350,000 dollars in fund balance added to the current 1.2 million, uh, that's available, and that still leaves us with 775,000 dollars in fund balance in cash flow needs for the underpaid or, or not received tax bills.
So, that's what we have.
We currently have 901,000 dollars as of last Thursday or Friday in tax bills that have not yet been paid, um, and this week, the, uh, lien notices are going out, and standardly we collect a significant portion of that, um, at, at that time. So, uh, so all in all, we have, at, we have 2 million plus in fund balance currently. But I, I'm suggesting that we need to maintain at least 750,000 in fund balance in order to provide cash flow capabilities, because of those non-paid taxes.
Sure. I thought we had a million more than we're saying here, in fund balance.
You'd use 1,550,000.
This is what you used to set the tax rate.
I remember.
Yeah, so that was, this is what we started the fiscal year with.
Yeah. So that was, this is what we started the fiscal year with. Then we had the $350,000 that went towards the bonding for the fire station, which left you, and then there was 1 million that you used to set the tax rate. So that left us with this balance of just about 2 million. This is the amount that Lilly would like to retain for cash flow, which would leave about 1.15.
Yeah. So that's scary to me to have at that level.
Is there an average amount that comes back at the end when, after we've collected?
No.
It varies every.
It varies, yeah.
Because revenues are different.
Revenues are different every year.
It has nothing to do with tax collections.
No.
The fund balance adjustments are made because you underspent the budget.
Right.
Or you under or over-received the revenue budget.
So this, this $900,000 in outstanding tax bills, as Lilly said, you know, we're going to be sending out lien notices. That shakes a lot of trees. So we expect that number to drop, which means that this number will go up. But, yes, this is, this is every year.
All right, Mandy, do we have any projections for whether or not we think we will underspend this year's budget or over-receive revenues? Or is it too early to tell?
My prediction is that $350,000 is about what I would foresee. This past year was a very tightly budgeted year. And we are tracking to spend pretty darn close to what we budgeted. We can't overspend it at the bottom line. And the revenue projections included the unanticipated state and federal funding because the DRA knew of that money before we ever received notice that we would be getting that money.
Before we knew we had that money.
Yeah, exactly. So I included it to, in our revenues because it reduced how much money we were raising and appropriating in taxes is past November. So.
Very tight.
So I, yeah, I'm not predicting anything more than 350,000, and that might be, that might be low.
Can we get a, can we get a bigger picture of what's going on there? First of all, the project of those capital reserve funds, but a lot of those are affecting to the balance, right?
Well, we can change those now, right? I mean.
We can change those numbers, at least one. I just want to get a sense of total percentage increase over the last year. Does that include those warrant articles or not? We have an operating budget that's up, what, 10% above last year?
Yes.
Does that include the warrants?
No.
No, that's just the operating budget.
Just the operating.
And water sewer enterprise, yes.
Right, I understand that. I agree with Bill. I think that's too high. 10% is not going to be acceptable to most of the population of New York.
But notice, she just mentioned that that number that you just turned includes something that isn't in taxes. The water sewer, not part of taxes.
Well, I understand, but still.
So what would it be without the water?
Well, in Nicole's presentation last.
The water sewer actually lowered to 7.5% increase because there's less bond money owed in water.
The total impact, pound tax impact of scenarios, of scenarios, if all the articles passed as a budget, and all the articles, was an increase of $3.26 per thousand.
Chart you will always regret.
Well, I mean, but that's.
That's where the eyes go, right there.
But, you know, and then the next part was, she said, well, if we use $500,000 fund balance, and that was what, a week ago, and already Lilly's saying it's.
That dollar figure is also, the 3.26 is assuming no growth in SS value. And our SS value increases by 10 to 12% every single year.
Okay, so then it's 2.13, it's $2.13.
Yes.
See, that's what no fund balance.
You're always going to use the fund balance.
Until there isn't one anymore.
It hasn't happened in a while.
Well, pretty darn close.
Just wanted to ask, I guess Nicole, going back to the 901,000 unpaid tax bills, yes, how does that compare at this time in previous year or two, to standard?
I'm sorry, say the question again.
How does that compare to outstanding, outstanding tax bills? Is that usually?
Oh, that's pretty standard here. It's consistent.
A couple of questions on the budget, Nicole. First of all, if we did end up decreasing COLA and merit, is there already an expectation in the town that those numbers are coming to them?
These are public meetings. I mean, they're aware, they're certainly aware that this is what we've talked about. I would certainly hope that no one's actually, you know, made financial decisions based on that, but.
And those COLA and merit increases would happen when the next budget's met, in July?
Yeah, they don't happen until next fiscal year. And they're not going to happen this year until after we've.
And then as far as.
Well, then 3%, 3.7% of it is not guaranteed. It's merit, it's earned.
Right. But on average, we would hope, again, to maintain the best, or to keep the best employees. We would put that money out, and indeed, that's the number we came up with. As far as other possible budget cuts, I think fuel, I think again, is a really good place that we should look at because I think those estimates were relatively high compared to what they are right now. And also, the other one, I, it kind of stuck with me a little bit, was there was a lot of budget mining, or not a lot, but in certain departments for potential hires, where we were expecting retirement, and we expected to hire within the next fiscal year a replacement, and we'll be like double paying that position. And maybe that scenario, we could potentially look at funding pretty easily. And.
Tell Chief Bernard you can't retire.
That would be fine.
I've already tried, it's all a matter of.
If he does retire, he's still going to be patrolling the streets.
Probably end up doing it asleep.
And then as far as the warrant articles, that, you know, I think it'd be worthwhile, if we have a few more minutes, is to go through what Bill recommended. Right now, you know, warrant article by warrant article. And Bill, again, you kind of hit us everything at once. I'd love to see that, you know, okay, let's look at that warrant article right now. It's 929,000. And are you suggesting we cut anything here? You know, and if so, let's talk about that. So could we just go, does that make sense to everybody? Kind of, that would be helpful to me. And then we can see, you know, again, maybe we have some priorities that we want to set.
Yeah, you asked, so I'll answer. Does it make sense to anybody? There's no way I'm really prepared to make a final.
Steve, no, I just want to get a big picture, right, today.
No, what I'm suggesting is that we get a written version of your recommendations, and we meet next week. And today, we can, we can go through this, as you suggest, but I think, well, not to try to resolve anything today, because I for one, need a lot more time to think about it. The question you asked Bill Kennedy of how this compares year by year is not an easy question to answer because there are a lot of things going on here. So I want to look at the various ways of looking at it at the same time to see how big a kick the taxpayers are going to actually see. Because I think there are a lot of ways to look at it that we want to present it fairly to the taxpayers. And before they understand it, I want to.
I think, so, I think we can make incremental gains by making some of these cuts. But really, the elephant in the room is the COLA, right? Like, to me, if we don't cut that, then the other, the other cuts that are being suggested are so incremental that it may not really make that much of a difference. So I'd, I'd love to keep, not tonight, but at the next meeting, maybe like, if we cut half a percent of the COLA, if we had cut 1% of the COLA, some kind of calculation. Because that's really, unless you really look at that, the other changes may not really make enough of a dent to even, you know, really go through all this detail. Does that seem fair?
Do we have a number with that current COLA that we suggested and merit was in dollar terms? Did that come up in some conversation?
We do have that number. The problem is that we have that number as an aggregate, not necessarily on the department level.
That's what I'm asking, the aggregate.
And so we would need to, we would need, because so much of this is funded by different funds, we would need to actually focus on what's funded by taxpayers and how that would add an impact. So it might, that would take a little bit of doing on our part, but yeah, we can do that.
I'd say it's hard to do tonight.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not prepared.
Right, I'm not.
We're here to, to, you know, get some, some suggestions on what you'd like us to look at. So this is perfect.
You could also see other, we saw examples of surrounding towns with similar increases in there.
Yeah, and we were in line up.
Right in line with that, so.
Only is that one that was 8.7.
We have, and other surrounding towns were, pretty close.
It was close.
Well, some, a lot of them are straight COLA at 6 or 7, whereas we're 5 COLA. And then the rest is merit.
But the difference is, is our town may have many more employees than other towns, so the aggregate numbers can be quite a lot.
Sure. That's why I'd like to see the dollars, not the percentage necessarily of how much we would save. So at this point, we can have that 1%.
I just wanted to also add on to this very, very difficult conversation. Because I think, I'm along with Bill Taylor, you know, when he mentioned, I think, very in the beginning of his suggestions, was the comment that department heads were kind of given the, you know, direction to kind of put forth a budget that they wouldn't have to cut any services. But then, Bill, to your point, and I heard you, is then we saw lots of increases, not lots, but we saw several increases in staff. So if you're, if you're providing the same services, why are we adding staff? And is that a place where we can possibly look at it? So, I mean, again, I know, I'm not, I'm not looking for like defense, or just that was, one thing I just wanted to know that I heard, and I.
Just want to make it clear, we're only actually putting in a position, one position that isn't in the current budget.
Right, but there were several that were part-time going to full-time.
Part-time going full-time, exactly. Or they were made full-time in previous, you know, previous, the current fiscal year, sorry, and then showing up as a full-time position, the new one. So really, when you get down to it, planning assistant is the only position that doesn't exist in the current budget.
And again, I'm not saying that they're not needed, and I'm not saying that they're not. I just, as an option of spots to look at, if we're managing without them now, then I know that's tough.
I think the real, the real challenge for the directors would be hiring their replacements. We, you know, if these retirees fully retire, and we try to, we try to recruit for a part-time custodian, a part-time police captain, a part-time water, I'm sorry, I can't think of the title off the top of my head. We're going to have, we're going to have a really tough time finding anyone who will do that work on a part-time basis. And it's not something you can really cobble together with others. Otherwise, it would have been done.
Yeah. No, I agree with that. But it's a very, very tough market. So to say it's a, it's a really tough market, so we're going to pad in extra in the budget in hopes that we'll find a good person, we might still be able to find a good, like, it's hard to find a good person regardless. So we don't necessarily know.
That's everybody.
Yeah, no, it's really, it's hard, so.
It is, it is very difficult.
Appreciate everybody, I do.
But that's where the maintaining a service level conversation really came in, is if you want to maintain a level of service, we couldn't see, you know, refilling these positions with part-timers as being able to maintain a level of service.
Yes. I guess my thought on that is, yes, everybody's having the same issue hiring people, but why make it more difficult with a lower salary? You're making it more difficult for yourself.
Nobody's, nobody's suggesting that we lower any salaries. We're not, we're not contemplating cutting anybody's pay. We're talking about the percentage of injuries. And at 6.7 cost of living and merit, we're almost exactly in line with every other town except Hancock.
We did see some, the examples of police positions that were, that were nowhere near.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Way under.
So that's, that, I wasn't talking about COLA, Bill. I was saying, why have salaries that aren't competitive if we could to fill those positions that Nicole's referring to? That's all I'm saying.
It's almost like a separate conversation, you know, this example here. You know, it's not COLA or merit, it's do we need to, you know, raise the entry-level salaries of our employees? I think it's a whole different discussion.
Well, and, I mean, just looking at this, for example, we are hiring at 10,000 less than this.
Right.
8.7% on $48,000 doesn't even get you $10,000.
Correct.
So our problem is that we need the, the funding to be able to consider making market adjustments, as Nicole had presented previously.
But 8%, 8.7% across the entire staff of the town versus raising all entry levels, you know, 5,000 or 10,000, that's.
It's not just entry.
Again, this is.
It's not entry levels.
It's mid, it's, you know, upper end. It's all over the place. It's, let me, let me just be very blunt. If you cut the money out of the salary line in the budget out of COLA and merit, because that's where it lives, it lives in the salary line, then you cut our ability to make any market adjustments. And that's, that is, yes, it's a ton of money. It's a ton of money. I know it is. And I know that it's the low hanging fruit. And, you know.
It's kind of low hanging fruit. Come on.
It's the biggest, it's certainly the biggest target because it is the largest, it's the largest piece. And I called it out in another slide in this presentation.
That's no more dramatic than, than people throwing their arms up, why never get a raise every year, you know, in the practice sector. But, you know, you've got to understand, municipalities are.
But even, that's not, you know, over the past three years, many, many companies have had to make those kind of market adjustments to compete. Like, this is not a new conversation.
Exactly.
And I don't think, Bill, I don't, I think, you know, as I said, and Nicole just also reiterated, it's because if you don't cut COLA, you can't really cut this budget. So that's the conversation that, you know, that you have to have. And I don't think anyone's, I don't think anyone wants to take any money away from people. But if you're, but if you're committed to not presenting this budget as is to the, to the people of this town, then you have to cut the COLA. That's the only way you're going to really get to a number that people will swallow, unless you can really sell it. Like, that's the challenge, is that when you, when we come to the deliberative session, and then again, to the town meeting, it's up to you guys to come up with a narrative that makes this number palatable, or acceptable, I should say.
You're right. People are going to ask all of us.
I agree with everything you said, except for one thing. It's not their guys, it's all of us.
Well, yeah, but we don't have.
You can sell whatever it is we think the budget will look like.
Right. Fair.
There's some increases here that are definitely not accurate.
You can make, you can make all those flat. You know, if diesel is flat, then that's $70,000.
Right. Well, I mean, I just paid $4.16 a gallon for a heat oil.
I understand.
And I'm not, I'm like, I'm not, that was for 92 gallons, so it's not like I'm buying 20,000 gallons of fuel here.
That's $125,000 altogether, if those things are flat.
Right, so really.
And that's, and that's not touching.
That's a number.
That's, it's 125,000. And, but it's not touching the whole increase. So yes, we can, we'll look at those things, we'll add those things up. We will definitely take a closer look at the personnel things and see if there's any savings there. Bill, I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't think that there's 1.4 million dollars of savings in the budget that I'm going to be able to find, unless you cut into services.
I'm not, that's not what I was asking you to do anyways.
I, I, I hope not, because.
I didn't say cut into a flat budget for last year. But that's a, that's a, that's a risk that you take representing a $1.6 million increase.
1.4.
In just those.
That's, it's 1.4 because we did make other cuts, trying, you know, trying to bring forward a responsible budget.
Sure, I know. And I'm not saying that nobody, like, works real hard at it. But if you add the CIP to this, we're looking at a $2.4 million increase in one single calendar year. And the real risk is that that gets voted down at town meeting, and now we're back to the last year's budget.
No, we're not. We go to open session and we figure something out.
Wow.
We can't close a, we can't close town meeting without a budget.
Right. But.
We don't have a default budget.
Well, the reason we got started early on Saturday.
You run the rest of the budget.
Get a food truck.
So for my identification, could we go article by article very quickly at a high level and talk about some of the things Bill originally suggested and just see where we agree? I mean, we're not going to vote today, obviously, but it'll be, it'll be helpful for me.
If we go item by item, could we address anything item by item, not just the proposal line?
Yeah, of course.
Kamal, yeah, sure.
So I skipped over the operating budgets. I feel like we kind of.
Could I ask a question? Would it be helpful in that CIP presentation anyways, to look at the actual CIP budgets and what it's going to affect on purchases for next year?
Yeah, as we go through one and we can pull up the CIP.
Because just looking at a dollar figure is not going to tell the story of what you're not going to buy next year.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. That's great.
I mean, one of the reasons that the police department's CIP is up so much is the request by the energy committee members of the CIP committee to buy EVs.
Right, that's, look at that, exactly. Lilly's approach is great.
Under the guise of the voters who want the green side.
Absolutely. But, I mean, though, it, it costs more money, so.
So GIS, GIS is up a little bit in the flyover this year. So, GIS, GIS is up a little bit, and the flyover this year. Tom is coming here. Police, as you said...
I don't want to nitpick, but is the flyover, is that best done every 10 years, five years?
It's every five years, I believe. It also helps, it's hugely beneficial, not just for the GIS mapping, but for a lot of departments. By keeping that data updated, we're able to capture much more realistic information for all sorts of different things.
It is hard to argue with that one. The only thing that blows my mind is that it could be $83,000 to get somebody to fly over with a camera on the bottom of the phone.
It's not, yeah, it's not just...
I know that it's not just that, but it still sounds expensive.
A lot of it is because of the LiDAR technology that, that is a bit more expensive, although if you look at the ask year-over-year, it's gone up very little in the almost 20 years now that we've been doing the flyovers. So, I think there's real value there. You already talked about the police department, the next one is the Fire Department Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund. Let me get that slide up.
Nicole, while you're getting there, just so you know, the police department's Capital Reserve Fund has historically been $18,100 for years.
Yeah.
The other money to buy those cruisers, which they have been doing on a two-in-one year, one-in-one year, two-in-one year, one-in-one year, that was taken out of the police department's budget in the general fund.
So that lowered the general fund number?
Yes.
But if we, for argument's sake, made the 80,000, 60,000, and then pushed 20,000 down the road a little bit, as a thought, you know, just as an approach possibly...
You just wouldn't, you would be...
How much would you do?
I'm just suggesting 20, maybe it's 30, maybe it's 10. I just think we have to take...
The balance you left with at the end of '24 is $39,275. That's the amount you could cut.
Right.
I'm worried about the strategy of, and I've heard it a thousand times, kicking the can down the road, saying, we're worried about this year's budget, so we're not gonna make the future budgets bigger.
Right.
And next year is going to be the mother of all budgets, so...
I just want to kick, I don't want to kick half the can down the road, I want to have the whole can.
I would say we want to, we want to be, this year is the easy year, folks. Next year is gonna be the big, the big lift.
You really think that COLA and merits are gonna be on the same level as they are this year?
No, but I think next year we're going to have to confront the cost of a fire station.
And I think people...
Operating budgets is not the big issue next year. This year it's the big issue. Actually, this year it's the medium-sized issue, next year we have a big issue.
Keep that elephant in the room. Phil?
I'm gonna recommend, the biggest expense that I see on there is the EV. Kick that can down the road.
I think that number is inflated, I would love to...
It's not just, it's not just the vehicle itself, it has to be outfitted to be a cruiser, and so that's...
Does that include outfitting?
Yes.
Does it include the charger at the station?
No, it doesn't. And that's, that's another thing that we'd have to put in the budget.
They just, we just leave it at the municipal lot. I'll be, I'll be right there, I just gotta wait in the parking lot.
Not to belabor the point, I apologize, but we actually did kick the can already.
The cruiser for the chief is supposed to be, it's on the schedule to buy an FY24. Because there's not enough funding in that account, it was pushed to FY25.
And that's the EV cruiser?
No, that's... That's the chief's vehicle.
The chief's vehicle, you know, it is in its fully outfit.
Which line is that one? Is that C?
The EVG.
Oh, that is the EVG.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't have the bench in the back, it does have other things. It's got all the radios, it's got the lights, it's, it does have a lot, it doesn't have, what it doesn't have is the cage.
Right. So if it was an EV, it would cost $40,000. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, absolutely.
So we could take 30,000, add the, this year's 80,000, and plan on just a gas customer as a possibility.
Just a thought.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, now let's hear what Ron...
Like, when I was going through the list and looking at it, this, this wasn't one of the reserve funds that I had initially.
But it's worth looking at, it seems like a luxury.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little bit concerned about the process that we're going through. It sort of seems like we're second-guessing the, what I think is the very fine work the CIP committee did, and they've actually looked at, come up with a proposal that I think is, is very well thought out, very well crafted. I don't recall seeing any kind of plan like this in any other budget committee meeting I've sat in on, so to pick this proposal apart, I think, unfortunately, it sort of degrades the effort of that committee and the work that they've put into this. But, be that as it may, it's our purview to review this and to comment on it, but I just want to end by saying that I think the CIP committee did an outstanding job. The proposals that they're putting forth to get us to put money into reserve funds now to avoid having to bond our way into insolvency, had to be done, and we, we need to bite the bullet and put this into action. Secondly, I feel like the department heads and the town administrator have put forth a budget, yes, it's up, but I feel that it's well thought out. I support it. It is going to be a sizable tax increase, but if we want to maintain the level of services that we've come to expect from the town, we want to keep employees, then we've got to bite the bullet and do what it takes. I've said.
Which is fine as long as it gets approved by the voters. That's the, our bottom line, that's what we're nervous about.
The next, next piece in Article 5 is the Fire Department.
I just wanted to offer a different perspective, and I understand where you're coming from, Ronnie, but I think that, I don't, I don't feel like we're attacking this or picking it apart. I do feel like these are good questions, just asking for a lot of us to understand better, because it is a big responsibility that we have to be able to fully understand. And I admit that I am typically a person to just trust in the process, and when we are presented with such a, a big number, I'm happy to take extra time and go through it a little bit more to make sure I really do fully understand, you know, everything that's placed before us. So I, I appreciate the questions that everyone's asking and the, the answers that we're getting. So I think, I don't hear a lot of, they're wrong, they shouldn't have done it this way. I hear a lot of, why is this this way? You know, so, that's all.
Well, that too, the Capital Reserve Fund Committee is working somewhat in a, an environment that they didn't understand what the total budget's gonna look like in the end. They were looking at, well, how do we solve this problem in a, in a practical way? Now we gotta put it into context of a huge budget increase, operational budget increase as well, so, you know, make some hard decisions.
And honestly, like, every year that I was on CIP, we got our budget together, and then we were told by the select board, you need to cut it by to, you know, 2.75% or whatever it was, and we went back and we did this whole process pretty much before it came to budget. So, so, I don't, Ronnie, I don't find this to be an unusual conversation at all. And I don't think it takes anything away from the work that the department heads and the CIP do, work that they do together.
I think we should only buy $150,000 worth of hand line hoses this year.
Bill, what did you want to cut from this? Didn't you, or reduce?
Well, I was, I mean, my suggestion is to either spread out these expenses or push them out a little, I mean, just reorganize the structure of it.
What was your number?
I mean, I can't, I mean, I, I, I mean, same thing, like, you're having a public meeting trying to argue with our first responders for both budget, like, somebody has to do it. I can't believe that it's $400,000 worth of hose over two years. I mean, it may not be the case, it's just, it sounds astounding to me. I used to sell fire hoses, and it's also been a really long time, so...
What was the number you came up with as far as this article, as far as dropping down to...
Uh, down 100 for...
275?
Well, that pushes it out to the next, because it's 375 next year and the year years after, right?
Yep.
It's an easier...
Well, I mean, we just spent $205,000 refurbishing a truck. Refurbishing a truck.
A lot less expensive than buying new.
Clearly.
A lot cheaper than buying it a year from now.
Nobody's arguing that, but doesn't that sound like an awful lot of money? I mean, it's 20% of the cost of the truck, even if it was today.
It's only a lot of money if it isn't worth it. If it's getting us the fire protection we want in this town, it's not a lot of money.
It's also extending the life of the truck. I mean, that's, it's how you milk it as, as long as you possibly can.
You remember, Bill, when the chief came in here and made his explanations why the number for the hose was that large, that he had a lot of hose that was not usable at this point, and he, just that he explained in some length why the hose numbers were the size they are.
Yeah, I mean, like, again, I'm not arguing with any of these people, I'm not arguing that we don't probably need this stuff. Saying that, I'm arguing that I don't want to see another half of our residents have to leave town.
In a perfect world, we love all this stuff, but we don't live in a perfect world.
Like, if blanket the whole thing with fire department, they should have whatever they want, honestly. Go ahead.
Just FYI, every year we do have our hose tested, all the hose on the, in the department is tested by a company that comes in from the other part of the world. But, we lose a little bit of hose then, and then during fires, a lot of times you'll lose a little bit here, a little bit there, and, you know, after a while, you know, it accumulates, you know, and also...
That all happens, and you don't replace any hose at all any year?
I don't know when the last time they didn't replace a lot of it.
It's been a while.
Normally, a lot of times what we do is when you buy a new fire truck, you outfit it with all brand-new hose, life diameter plus all your attack lines and stuff, but just FYI information.
But if you're refurbishing your fire trucks, you're not buying permanent hose at the same rate?
No, not, not for this one. They just, you know, they are refurbishing the current engine one, and, you know, what, you know, they're paying 200 to refurb as opposed to 4, 5 plus to buy a new one.
Again, nobody's arguing that, you know, these things all need to be done, can we afford it?
If you were to step it out, I think the ladder truck they're talking 1.4, which is a year or two beyond that shot.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let's keep moving.
Yep, I'm looking for the next slide.
These schedules aren't set in stone.
Quick question about the, I mean, I know that, like, Rick mentioned, like, a, like an overview, like, a larger kind of, I thought we were gonna be looking at, like, the, the whole article, not each line. Like, I feel like without the CIP committee or department heads here, going through every line of the, the CIP process is a little...
Right.
Futile, I guess, is the word. Yeah, I thought that we were just looking at the whole articles, like, each of them one by one.
Article 5, Article 5 has a lot of big numbers, I think that's why we're spending a little more time on Article 5.
Yeah, I just feel like without the department heads or the CIP committee here, it's a little, I feel like I got school talking about it.
These schedules aren't set in stone. I mean, like, we're talking about, you know, like, the CIP committee, I don't know how much each one of them knows about fire equipment needs, and, you know, they're told, this is what we're gonna need and when we're probably gonna need it. Whether or not there's movement either way, or the price of that stuff, there's movement either way, there's nothing against them, but that was, they were asked to, they were charged to come up with a proposal to fund all these improvements based on a schedule that was not set in stone.
Right, but to Leslie's point, do we now go back and let them talk about this rather than us doing it at this meeting? That's what I'm thinking.
No, and I don't think you go through the, the whole thing again. I think, you know, you get through this, let's go through the rest of the article, let's, let's look at these things, and then let's look at the article as a whole.
Okay.
And, you know, if, if there isn't a desire to have some of this article cut, I would ask that, rather than saying, let's target this cut, this cut, this cut, this cut, let's say, okay, we want to target an amount off at the top of this article, and then let me and Lily go back, talk to the directors, figure out where, what that looks like in the CIP, the whole CIP, and see what we can do there. Okay? Does that make sense?
That was my intent in suggesting we do this right now, just kind of big picture, brainstorming a little bit right now, because this is all, a lot of this is all new to us. So the next big one, I guess, would be the fleet management, and we don't have to spend a lot of time on the smaller ones.
Yeah, I mean, winter operations, that's just to get us up to the 60,000, which was our target for that. Fleet management, there it is. Fleet management, again, vehicles that are spanning decades in age from 1999 all the way up to fairly recent, they're spread out all over the...
And again, if we want to just play it a little tighter, we can look at the balance there, maybe.
Current $1,000.
Arguably, we could say the 68 grand, maybe we say, let's cut out 34, make it a $34,000 balance. I'm just throwing that out as a possible approach.
Well, that's the...
Because these are all very important things to do, you're right.
So this is the current balance as of today?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the end of fiscal year.
So, yeah, this is the money that, that would be getting spent out of it.
Right. But we only spent 350 there. Well, I, I see you...
Yeah.
Right, you're right, go ahead.
Excuse me, the next one after this is Rec Department.
Another, for instance, is that, that 10-wheeler, as old as it is, doesn't get used all that much. Maybe necessarily need a brand-new one to do the work that it does.
Mostly just for snow removal, isn't it?
Pretty much.
There's only one or two that can drive in anyway.
But we don't, I mean, like, I don't know if we really need to nitpick each thing, it's just the schedule just needs to be rebuilt if we make these changes. We, they just, a few years ago, got a completely rehabbed to the tune of, I don't know, $15,000 of a used truck from the Highway Department, which is what they're using now. I don't see the need at the Rec Department for a brand-new $100,000 heavy-duty pickup. They hardly do any problem with it at all. I mean, usually if you go by there and there's a snowstorm, and this van's backed in front of it, and then they drive around wherever they're going with the plow on it when there's no snow in the forecast or in the past forecast, I just don't see the need for a brand-new truck sitting there when we cycle through them on the Highway Department pretty often, and there's plenty left of them.
$100,000 for the Highway Department would be a better spend on a heavy-duty truck than...
It's gonna get used for a while.
Something for Nicole and her people to think about.
And the last one's just $15,000 towards Adam Poole, and that's just for, you know, to keep up with maintenance on the pool, so...
Let's go to Article 6. And here, Bill, what was your suggestion on the road improvement? Article 6, the...
Nothing, I didn't have one, I did, that's a hard one to argue with.
$400,000?
Yeah, that's, that's a program that we...
That's a program that's consistently working very well, and we got...
But even if it became 350,000?
That's a really tough one to cut, with the cost of what goes on there and the amount of infrastructure just within the real tight downtown.
And that is specifically designed to save money in the long term.
Right, right, I'm not saying...
That would cut, that would cut 10%.
I mean, if that one gets ended early, that's fine, but I think, cut it at this point.
Upper Hall Spendwell Trust, this is money coming out of the unrestricted fund balance. This is money that is already... This is money that is already collected and fees that we charge for renting the Upper Hall, so there's no tax impact here.
I don't understand why that is separated from the facilities and grounds capital reserve fund.
Purposes? The purposes are a little bit different. I want, this one is just meant to be targeted to the Upper Hall for the maintenance of the Upper Hall.
Why can't you still do that in the other reserve fund?
Would be able to, but the money would disappear into that, would likely just go into other things, so it was.
I don't understand why. You control, the, the, the Snackboard controls how money's used in the reserve fund, right? So putting this money into that reserve fund, and still being able to control it, if I feel it wants to go to the Upper Hall, it would be there.
The only difference being that this would be funded, you know, hopefully by fees. That'd be the goal of it, rather than add a taxation. So it would be the Upper Hall supporting the Upper Hall.
Does it matter how?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily, but that was, it's, it's just like the Adams Pool, for instance. I mean, that's, that's money coming out of taxation. You could call that a facility, and you could add that in, or you could set aside specifically for the Adams Pool.
So it can be done either way?
Yeah, you can do it either way.
We can get rid of one warrant article?
Yeah, I think that would be the strongest argument. If you just combine those two.
The second one was, was designed during the discussions with the CIP as a way to simplify the way things are organized. And that's why it was extended to the facilities and grounds was to drive it broadening. Because originally, it was just focused on things within the Rec Department, and so this was trying to say, what if future things come up that are of similar nature, we're not going to do separate warrant articles in one of them. So if we have $5,000 from fees for maintenance, and it's legal to put it into that reserve fund?
Yeah, I think you could just add that sentence to Article 10, you know, and just say, you know, this year, $5,000 to Upper Hall coming from those fees.
So you're increasing the capital reserve fund?
No, no, right now, the capital reserve fund.
The unrestricted fund balance.
The Article 10.
We're not saving any money out of it.
No. It's just moving, it's moving it into, it's combining two into one, and I would suggest, I'll think about it the next week.
It's, it's up to the board at this point, so.
We don't need to, for labor, adjustment like that today.
This Article Eight, one of the reasons I proposed cutting from that, which was 150, was that.
People that went up and come.
Of the bridges, of the bridges that are in, have been identified that they need a bunch of work. Bill, at least one is in the Downtown Tiff, two and culverts are in the South Peterborough Tiff, and we've already decided, I mean, the, the South Peterborough Tiff Committee is already, you know, working on funding those bridges and culverts that are in that direct district with those funds. I don't know, I can't speak about the Downtown Tiff, but is there two? Is Elm Street and Grove Street?
Is Elm Street in any one of the?
Elm Street's not in a Tiff district. Grove Street is in the Tiff district, but there isn't enough money in the Tiff district right now to support it, and so to be able to do it at the same time that we reconstruct the rest of Grove Street, we need to be able to raise and appropriate the money sooner than later, because of the roads program and the timing of that. You won't have enough time to increase the amount of money being captured by the Downtown Tiff in order to finance the work for the Grove Street Bridge.
Right, but, I mean, we're also talking about rough estimates here.
It's not, the Grove Street one is not a particularly rough estimate. We've already had HTA look at it, and they provided a number or two, Seth, that you could use for budgeting.
Doesn't the West Peterborough Tiff sunset in '24?
Twenty-five. None of these are West Peterborough.
I know, but if it sunsets and it's got a lot of money in it that's not used, couldn't it transfer over?
No, it has to stay to the purpose. It has to, so the money that's collected by a Tiff district can only be used for improvements within the Tiff district, so that money can stay and continue to be used as an expendable trust fund to support the improvements within the Tiff district. But it can't be, if it, it's very complicated. If it were to be returned, it would have to be broken out across the, the town, the school, the county, and the state. So it's, it's, it's really messy if you do that. It's much, it's much more straightforward if you continue to use the funds to support the infrastructure they built in the first place.
I mean, it's probably, I asked Seth to be here, but he, I think, told not to. There's a chance that you could just resurface Grove Street, that bridge, do the new membrane, lay the new pavement on it while you're doing all the rest of it, and not make the exterior or underneath of it look particularly fancy in that exact same time. So there's ways to split that out.
Well, this is, this is based on the recommendation from the structural engineers, and without them or Seth here to talk about it any further, I can't really comment on the number or the timing of it. But that is partially offset by money that was accepted, the unanticipated bridge aid money, so it's, yes, the total amount is $500,000, but 300, or $237,830 is coming out of the unrestricted fund balance, because that's where it will be at the end of the fiscal year. But it was money that was accepted for the purpose.
But there's no way of showing that line as being the difference between the 500 and 237, just to make it more palatable?
Is that, and also is that 237 reflected in the fund balance number that you just showed us?
Yes, so that's, it's not in the fund balance yet.
It's revenue.
It's revenue currently. As of July 1, it will be in the unrestricted fund balance, but that's when all of this happens, is effective July 1. Does that make sense?
There's no way of showing that line, though, as 300,000?
No, I, so the way, I have to title it as the gross appropriation. All of these warrant articles, even if they have offsetting revenue, they have to be shown as the gross appropriation, and then you can say this is how much there is in offsetting funds. The RA is very specific about that.
And in the presentation at deliberative session, that, that remainder will be.
Right, I understand that. I'm just saying psychologically, I'm just trying to, you know, make it a little more palatable where possible. Right, they say 500,000.
If that top number came down by 150, there's still 237 plus 100.
Right.
And that matches the number of the first bridge on Grove Street.
Tell me if I'm wrong, but this would be discussed in open session, correct?
No, this is all, right now, the way that, the way that, the way that I've presented the draft, the draft warrant is with the idea that everything possible that could be put onto the ballot would be put onto the ballot. The selectmen can, of course, decide to move things to the open session if you choose to. But right now, there is nothing that is statutorily required to go onto the open session except for the budget in case it fails on the ballot. The next article is Article Nine for the Ambulance Service Revolving Fund, and that's the $450,000 of his Peterborough share of the 911 emergency service.
What was I looking at that showed that? That's 330. Oh, ambulance-serving fund support is 330 for '24. On this summary of the Capital Improvement Plan.
This isn't capital improvement. This is, this is their budget. This is the tax-supported portion of their budget. The Capital Improvement Plan is, is built into their budget because they're a revolving fund, so the Capital Improvement Plan and their operating budget are combined into that, their entire, their total budget. Facility grounds capital reserve funds is just a creative fund. This doesn't actually ask to fund it. The terms of compensation for the elected officials of 21,000, this is, this is all me. This didn't come from anybody else. This is my, because it's been quite literally decades since any of the elected officials have had their stipends increased. It made sense to me that we look at increasing their stipends, especially considering the incredible amount of work that they do. So I put this article together for consideration.
I agree 100% with you that they deserve those raises, but again, psychologically, do we want to consider either reducing or eliminating?
Yeah.
I'm fine with the Select Board coming off of that completely. The rest of them, I completely agree with, but I, I can't be on, for presenting this, that's a big reason a budget being like, yes, except for like, maybe to show you where I'm going to get a little insult, Deandrea.
Yeah, and I don't know about you, Bill, but I didn't take this job for the money.
I didn't even know you got it anywhere.
I'd like to add the treasurer to that list of conversations in there as well. I'd be fine with it not having any increase. I was, I was told when I ran for it, it was 2,500, so, but 2,000 works too.
I can move it forward with just the supervisor of the checklist, then?
I think the optics on this are important, and great, even though the amounts are.
Is the supervisor of the checklist, she, he didn't ask for that increase, right?
I can speak to that.
Really?
The supervisors of the checklist did ask for this increase, and after I showed them the original warrant article, they asked for an additional $1,000 in the once-every-decade purging of the voter checklist. That won't happen again until 2031, so they did ask for an increase.
I'd like to contradict.
Yes, please do.
We should give you the 2,500 that you told you would have.
I mean, that's, again, I didn't do it for the money either, so, but I also agree with Mary, the optics of it, maybe not this year. Maybe we can think about it next year.
Or if already you could give the, if you agree that, or you want to maintain the supervisor of the checklist.
More about keeping for me, not the treasurer. Well, if you just raise the treasurer from 2040 to 2,500, that's not.
Right.
The problem is, again, it just seems, yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't translate on the ballot. There's still like a, why on earth is this?
Well, unless you combine it, supervisor checklist, treasurer, and if you're to do something with town clerk, maybe those would all be one article. One unpleasant thought.
Lily, can you, what you just said about when the $1,000 kicks in, 2031?
It's only once every decade that the voter list is purged.
Is there some language that you could add so people know that is way in the future?
So the reason that I wrote it that way is that I have no control over how future voter list purging years could change, so I wanted to leave it as the year that the voter list is purged, as opposed to every year that ends with 1, which is what it currently is.
Or if you put parenthetically, 20, currently, 2031?
Still.
I would suggest what you just described means that you shouldn't say the voter list purge occurs once every 10 years. You should say typically occurs, something like that, because otherwise, everybody's going to ask this question, but yours isn't. If your point is, we don't know for sure, we have to, there's some vagueness about that.
They haven't changed it in a long, long time. I just don't want to leave it as the year that ends with 1.
Yeah, I think saying every 10 years and we just did one.
We could put in a phrase that says the last voter purge was conducted in 2021.
Right, or next one.
Something to explain.
Yeah, or just have the purge, just leave it at purge. Without the purge once every 10 years.
I think, you know, it's going to be a very small dollar amount.
Right, again, it's just psychologically, we're looking at things right there.
I don't think anyone's really going to notice it, honestly.
And that, that $1,000 per is not in, it's not in the cost of this year's warrant?
Right.
So it has to be raised appropriately.
We're only, we're looking not only at dollars right now, but also just psychologically for the voter. That's why we're presenting some of these things.
I think it's crazy that they want an extra $1,000 to run the election, which was what they were already hired to do. I don't get that.
They spend more time.
I'm not yelling at you.
They have to be begged to run. They, they really do. No one wants to do it. It is very thankless, and it's an incredible amount of time, so.
It's not even worth it for just the one day of the election.
Wish I could make $1,000 a day.
It's not a day.
It's not a day.
The amount of meetings that they have to have.
Yeah, right. I'm saying it'd be worth it if it was just for the one day.
I mean, the day after, the day after when they're all sitting in here with the laptops out, and they're scanning the barcodes, and that thing is going beep, 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 it makes me crazy.
It's worth a dollar a beep.
I think, I think it might be. It's crazy. It's very uncomfortable. It's very unpleasant work. So I greatly appreciate the effort that they put into it.
So, so I think we're resolved that that's the only thing that's going to remain on the ballot or on the warrant article is just the supervisors?
That's what it sounded like. Assuming that slightly. Terms of compensation for the elected town clerk, this is a, this is really us trying to put into effect what the town has been doing for decades, but has not actually adopted by town meeting as far as I can find. So the town clerk has, and this is not just the current town clerk, but town clerks for the, for decades, have been entering their service at a level as, in a way that is similar to a salary to exempt full-time employee, which includes a salary level equal to executive salary structure grade six, and then after, then they are receiving the cost of living increases each year.
I'd like to recommend eliminating Article 12 altogether, because it does three things, none of which seem to be needed whatsoever. For example, it says a newly-elected town clerk, and then it talks about with that person with you. Given that a newly-elected town clerk will have already had a salary set by town meeting, because they get elected about the same time as a town meeting, as the day before the town meeting, it seems to me that level ought to be at a market level. We don't want to have the cheapest person who will accept the job. We want to pay what it takes to get somebody who's good for it. So I think this just ties the hand of the town by saying in advance, what you're willing to pay for a town clerk is the least amount of money in that, in that pay series. So not, just to say why I say there are three things. One thing says how much you're going to pay someone who fills a vacancy. The person who fills a vacancy appointed by the Select Board is a town employee, not an elected official.
They are a town employee. They're, they're not a town employee. They are an elected official.
They've not been elected.
No, no. They're appointed.
Oh, the appoint, if there is an appointed deputy, yes.
No, no, if they're the appointed person to fill this slot, that's what this says. An appointed to fill a vacancy.
Or a appointed.
Yes, I'm referring not to that, that particular aspect.
I'm sorry.
That person is a town employee, in which case the town should negotiate whatever it feels is appropriate. It doesn't need to be constrained at all by what happens at town meeting. And then thirdly, it talks about the town clerk shall receive an increase equivalent to cost of living adjustment approved prior to town meeting. That phrase presumably means embedded in whatever was given to other employees. When it says approved by, by that. So since the law requires that changes in compensation to town clerks be done at the town meeting, it seems that you want to have a very simply worded mention, say, like, exactly like Article 13, every year. And that puts in whatever it is you think is appropriate as a, as an increase. So I'm just saying the three things that Article 12 does are unnecessary. It just means that you have to do an Article 13 every year, which is what the law sort of suggests you want to be doing.
One of the things that this article also does is provides the compensation package, which includes sick leave, vacation leave, short-term, long-term, accidental death and disability insurance to the town clerk. All of that is included in the section that says all of the benefits equivalent to those offered in the Town of Peterborough's Employee Manual to a Salary Consent.
But that doesn't change anything, because if you are going to hire somebody and you're going to offer them a package by making a job offer, oh, well, that's going to be in there.
It won't be if it won't, if it's not adopted by town meeting.
Indeed. The point is, no matter what you do, you're going to have to adopt a salary for the town clerk at town meeting.
Right, so.
You can't do it in advance unless you say something like this, which means we're going to give you the least amount that we can.
Well, that doesn't say that, though. It just says minimum compensation.
It doesn't say you're going to get the minimum. It says.
Yes, but it's useless then, because if it's not the actual offer, why mention it?
But you don't have an offer. When you, when you run for town clerk and you get elected, you, you're, it's just showing that you, this is a starting point for someone coming in as town clerk. It's not saying that you can't get a little bit more if you've got more experience doing it, or that, you know, it's just saying that that's the minimum.
it, or that, you know, it's just saying that that's the minimum compensation that, that, that position will actually offer.
No, that's not what it says.
It says, shall begin service.
The minimum in that salary range.
Says it will begin service with the minimum in that salary.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Carl, why can't we just say, this year, the number is 86 blah, 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 and not tell, give everyone the like, the sausage making in the background of, oh, we got there. Like, why does it have to be all this extra?
Well, it's not even useful, because this is referring not to their current one, it's referring to whoever comes along later. We don't know how much we want to offer that person, because we don't know what the job market looks like. We want to be able to hire somebody when.
But you're not hiring.
We're not hiring.
When it happens.
However, it happens.
The town is hiring, not the administration. The town is hiring.
We're electing.
The town is hiring.
That's what you mean.
Tom does some hiring right there.
The voters of the town are the town.
Are hiring, yeah.
The legislature hires this person.
I see.
And the legislature needs to say what it thinks, and it ought to be a market rate, because otherwise, you're not going to get one, somebody who's good, who's good. You want an experienced person who knows what they're doing?
Well, but you're not.
We have an experienced person who knows what she's doing, but if, the day she leaves, where are we going to find a replacement? You've got to be able to offer them a package that's market, that's consistent with what the market looks like.
Are you saying every year the town clerk should, as an elected official, separate from employees, should propose to the voters that they receive, let's use their, their salary, dollar amount, and then the dollar amount for their benefits package, and then their increase in merit or?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying the.
Each year, they should, they should give the full dollar amount.
I'm not saying the town clerk should do that, I'm saying the warrant article should do that.
The town clerk should propose a warrant article, shouldn't they?
I, I am not.
Because they're not under the curfew of the select board, they're an elected official.
No, but the select board puts warrant articles up there.
True.
So, the select board will put any warrant article that it wants up there.
After present, presentation from department heads and other elected officials.
Well, how the, how the town, how the select board decides to do it is up to the select board. I don't think there's any rule on how they do that. But, for example, if the select board were to put up a warrant article that is less compensation than the town clerk feels is appropriate, the town clerk, I believe correctly for hung, could do it, could do a separate warrant article by petition.
So, you're saying that the select board would be responsible for the, the performance review, in essence, of that town clerk, because we'd be suggesting a merit or a COLA increase for that person, but it's really the voters that have the say over that performance, not just the?
I'm not saying.
It's not a merit, it doesn't need a merit. I don't, I don't believe you can do a merit-based increase for the town clerk. Basically, that you, if you get reelected, that's, that's where, that all comes into play. I mean, I, I think what, what I assume it should mean is that it's a COLA-based increase for the town clerk.
It says merit on Article 13.
Well, I didn't write this. I didn't write this.
There was an original article presented last time that had them combined, and we thought about that performance review thing, it's the voters that are performing, that are reviewing the performance of the town clerk, it's not us.
But that's only happens every four years, or whatever your term is. We, we, we review her by voting.
Yes.
But it also happens. She doesn't get a merit increase.
You re-contract her, that's, and I think that that's what this is trying to do, because she's re-contracted, or the town clerk, not necessarily Linda, but any town clerk is re-engaged every three years by voting that person back into office. The merit is so that each year, if, you know, there is a raise to be given, because that person has merited it through their good work, just like the employees of the town, the voters could choose to award that merit. That, that was the idea behind the warrant, the money-worrying warrant art.
Yeah, that's the idea behind it, but it isn't necessary that it be a merit increase. Any change in compensation has to go through the town meeting.
Correct.
So, regardless of the reason for it, you don't need to say merit, you just need to say an increase, or you just need to say a salary of X.
Yep.
And that's, that's a, whatever is a change. It doesn't have to be every year, but that's actually what makes sense, is to every year reconsider how you're going to deal with inflation. You don't have to say it has anything to do with performance, you just have to say it is.
Right. Raise and appropriate, blah, 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 and, and don't tell people.
So, how do you tie in the benefits, the vacation?
You include that in whatever statement you make about compensation. The compensation will be X or Y, or you could say the compensation, well, you can phrase it in various ways, but the point is, all compensation should be, go before the town meeting. You, you write it one time, and then every year you reconsider it, then you write, send the same message, and.
Just the number.
You don't have to fold in the number of what the benefits packages were.
Yeah, you would have to in this case, because.
The value has to be.
That, that number is in the town clerk's department budget, and the budget is voted on by the voters, so it is put forward at annual town meeting.
So, if it came out.
The problem, the problem is, is that without adopting Article 12, we shouldn't be doing that.
That's right.
That's DRA.
Any change in compensation has to go directly before voters.
Yeah, we have, exactly, because that's.
Yeah, the change in compensation has to go before voters.
That includes benefits.
But because the benefits have never been adopted by the voters in years I've been able to find, there's never been an adoption of health, health insurance, life insurance, dental insurance, any of those things, vacation time, sick leave and all that, we need to be able to adopt it, whether you adopt it this way, or as Carl's suggesting, by breaking it out with a dollar value attached to the package, either in whole or in pieces, that it needs to be adopted in order to be able to continue providing that compensation.
Well, without this conversation, Article 12 doesn't tell any of it to me, so, I, yeah, I mean, it's.
I'm suggesting we don't need Article.
Those words to me don't say anything about.
Article 12 to me isn't necessary.
It's just very confusing to me.
But, but this establishes the benefits that make that an attractive position, this, this article. And then it can still remain in the budget, right, as it, as it has, and then the, the increases are separate warrant articles.
Do you only have to adopt this one time?
Yes.
This year, and then Article 12 goes away after this, if they accept it?
Yes.
Yes.
Article 12 goes away, but Article 13 would be.
Would be an annual.
Every year.
Right. And it wouldn't have to be called merit, it could just be the, the.
Increase.
Yeah, salary increase or what have you.
Why don't we have to show the increase? Why can't we just show the total, the compensation?
You can. It's, the idea behind this was to, was to write articles that would make it as close to as how the town has been doing it for the last 20 years, 30 years. Actually, I went back to 1986 and still have to find a warrant article.
Why are we not putting on that?
Sorry.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Let's also review this with town council.
Town council.
Specifically.
Yeah, town council looked at this language, DRA looked at this language, they were all very happy with it, so.
So, so, okay, so, to go back to Article 12 for a second, one of the issues that Carl brings up is, is a very good one, which is that we're setting the, the salary for a new town clerk at the minimum grade six, but that doesn't give you any wiggle room at all. So, why not just take out the minimum part and say grade six compensation? Because then you, there is a range, right, in grade six? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, to me, that, that makes a huge difference, just taking out that one word.
At that point, you're not saying what it is.
Well, it's grades.
You're just saying it's some amount of money.
Can't you look up grade six, what that is for the town?
No, but it's a range.
Right, but I'm saying, you can look up the range of grade six.
But who decides what the number's going to be, is what I think you're saying, right?
Yeah, you're, you're not really telling anybody anything, except you're saying it's within some range, but.
This is, this is the cart before the horse, or whatever you call it, that where the town clerk has to get elected and, and then save their own salary, but they won't know what their salary's going to be before they get elected, and we don't, none of us have the power to set that salary, because they're not an employee.
No, the town does, but, but remember that, what, as we were just talking, the proposal for that amount basically runs through the select board. It can run through anybody in the town who wants to send forward a petition article. We all know that if you have two articles on the same thing, and one of them is supported by the select board, that's probably going to be the one that people vote for.
I mean, it's really tricky, because somebody could run for town clerk theoretically that was completely unqualified, and they could win, and, you know, instead of making $80,000, you know, they should only be making $20,000, you know, but obviously, how do we control that? I don't have an answer for that.
You do run into that problem. I mean, let's, let's imagine for a second that Linda wins Powerball next week, and, you know, she.
Sayonara.
She buys Corboran, you know.
Yeah. No more meetings for Linda.
Exactly. So, you know, then, then we're in a position of, of filling the position, well, I mean, right now would be less horrible, because we do have a town meeting coming up in just a couple of months, but let's say that she were to win Powerball in June, you know, and then we've got to fill the position. This at least gives us something to work with, you know, as a starting point. I, I do see your point, you know, we could take out the word minimum compensation, and then you just have that range that the selectmen could work with, and then be able to decide what's assigned to the appointed town clerk. But it's, it would be very difficult to bring town meeting back together to determine what an appropriate market value salary would be.
No, I, I suggest that would be something that the administration.
Right, or both.
Figures out what the market thing is, and then they put forward through the select board, a recommendation at the town meeting, that's what the salary should be.
Yeah, maybe that's the trick.
But if, but if Linda were to leave in June, we wouldn't be meeting again until, you know, town meeting.
But that's true either way, whether, regardless of what you've written here. You're going to have to have somebody appointed by the board until a new election. So, regardless of when it happens, that, you have, you have to face that problem.
Right.
I'm suggesting one of the reasons, one of the problems with this is, you've tied your hands with this by saying how much that person makes.
Yeah.
So, you don't, there's no reason to tie your hands.
I don't disagree. I mean, we, we're tying our hands one way or the other to an amount, you know, really.
No, you can negotiate with an employee.
You want to tie yourself to a range, and then decided by administration and the select board.
For the appointee, you have complete freedom to negotiate.
And then we could take out the word appointed.
You can take out that phrase, and that would strengthen it, because that particular one is, in my view, not at all useful.
Well, you still run into the issue you bring up without the appointed person, what do they get paid? And then they're responsible for coming up with their salary for the, the year they're going to be running for election.
Right, exactly. But in the interim.
Well, they're not responsible for coming up with a number, they can say whatever they want.
Exactly.
But that doesn't mean they get it.
Unless, if the voters agree.
No.
Yeah.
If they, if they, if, if you, you would generate the warrant article, and it would be whatever number you think is appropriate, you as a select board. Now, if the town clerk wants, wants to run on a different number, I mean, if a person who's running on, for town clerk, wants to come up with a different number, they're going to have to do a petition warrant article. And you're going to win that contest.
Very interesting. Yeah, I don't think the election is a question as much as the appointee situation. We get the appointment, give it a swing, that's the tricky part.
Need some guidance.
Right.
Although there are a lot of constraints to what the select board can do, there's also a lot of power, even in the case of an elected person. We're talking about a person who doesn't actually work for, so it's, there's nothing personal involved, and it's a, my point is, you want to get somebody who's good, and so you want to have a competitive rate.
To Carl's point, should it be split? I mean, you, I do think you need to include the appointed, in case that does, that scenario ever happens. I wouldn't take it out, right? Because it did happen, so you want to be sure to include it, but I think maybe there's some, it needs to maybe be split out separately and not meshed together with the elected?
Why didn't it say anything at all about the appointee?
Because it's happened, they're not all appointed.
No, but it doesn't have to be in a warrant article.
Why not?
Because if you lose an elected person, it's a job of the select board to appoint somebody temporary.
Okay, but did DRA said we have to have appointed?
They didn't say anything about appointed. I think we put that in.
Okay. So, to your point then, Carl, it could come out and still be legally viable, but then I'm wondering, why can't that first sentence just stop at full-time employee, which includes a salary, period? Why do you have to say level equal to executive? Why do you have to be that specific?
Yeah, that's where it is now.
But that's where it is now, but that's not where it's going to be forever.
Yeah, it, well, the, it, it will be until we change, unless the salary structure is edited.
But does DRA require that specific, specific information?
No, they require that the, that the voter be able to figure out, you know, through research, or, you know, looking at a handout or something along those lines, what that means, what does that mean? You know, well, if I, you know, I look at the town's employee handbook, I know what the benefits package is, and, and there will be the salary structure. And that means that the, this year, that salary will be between X dollar and Y dollar.
How many levels are there?
In each of the three structures, well, there's two structures with 10 grades each, and one structure, the union structure, which has to whatever it is.
Grade, this, grade level, that's, it's a grade level 1 through 10?
1 through 10, yeah.
Since we only have to do this once, let's strike the word minimum and go with it as it is, since it's already been okayed by the town council, right? And do it right?
I don't know why we have to do it even once.
Apparently, DRA.
DRA didn't ask for this. They said, if you want to do it, it's acceptable to them.
No, that's.
DRA, DRA says we do need to establish the terms by which the town clerk is compensated, which includes the, the benefits package, something that town meeting has not been able to demonstrate.
That, that's important for the position to establish that.
Absolutely. And it's someone who's, who's working 40 hours a week, or when there's elections, so it's, it is important that you're able to attract someone to that position and compensate them fairly.
Okay, we do what Mary said. Cut out the minimum later, because it's already been approved.
But what if you get someone who's elected that doesn't have Linda's level of experience? I don't want to pay them a salary level six.
Well, no, great, they would already be in grade level six, but they would be starting at the minimum, and instead of the maximum.
I don't, is that 80,000, 40,000?
The range is from 58,000 to 87,000. So, you're just saying somewhere between there.
It's just like.
They're not already in grade six, that's just another.
Great, grade six is, is the, the range that, that particular salary is falling in. All the, the ranges, all, all the levels overlap, all the grades overlap.
Somebody wants for that position.
They're not even in any, any of these grades, because they're not employees.
No, but it's on the salary schedule.
It has to be.
Yes, but they're not employees, so, they, they're not subject to those rules.
Right.
It's just a way of expressing the range from those two numbers.
Right, I see, right.
I guess the question is, when you have a new town clerk running for that position, how do you, do you have to say town clerk, election, and I guess you would have to state a range? You'll be making 58 to 88, depending on experience.
You can tell them what the previous one was making, and they can figure out for themselves what that implies.
Right. But I mean, if they win and they, and then you say, no, you're not making 80, you're only making 50, and 50. A broad people have to know what they're running for, is my point.
This one would set the, the way it's currently written would set a fixed dollar amount. If you keep the word minimum in there, then you know exactly what the dollar amount will be, because it'll be the bottom, the, right now, $58,000.
Or if you said least.
A well-informed person who doesn't command a high salary.
I'm going to throw a shoe in this conversation. Do we keep this on the ballot? Or we could put it in open session and have a hearty, you know, debate over it?
I don't think this is a.
Let's say that could really eat up.
Why don't we say, let's save it for next week?
Such a dangerous question, next week.
I've done enough damage for today, so.
Well, it's a confusing subject, and we've got to get it right so we get fair compensation.
Would you like us to look at some variations based on this conversation?
Yes. Great idea.
The merit increase is the merit increase.
Well, it's not a merit increase.
We should call that cost of living, don't we?
No.
Compensation.
The cost of.
It's just an increase in compensation.
It's just an increase.
Yeah.
I mean, 30.
Yeah, it's not a merit.
Salary increase.
It's not, it's not a merit.
Yep.
So that has to come out on both the line and the, it's not a merit-based salary increase.
That is the second sentence. So strike merit.
Strike merit in both places.
There is a problem with referring to this as salary increase because the cost of benefits would also be changing.
Yes.
And that's not reflected in that.
It's, it will include, it, well, it is all rolled in there.
All associated increases to all the increases.
No, it's not, though.
What it says is salary increase.
And pay also see it increases to taxes and benefits.
But it doesn't include.
It doesn't say what those benefits are.
Sure, no.
And it never has.
So it just said an, an increase, it drops salary to it, just said an increase.
Is it necessary at some point to say?
But you said it was necessary to say what benefits.
It's, and it's related to the prior article.
Right.
So that means in, in, in out years, when we don't put Article 12 in, it's just going to say.
Per the terms of.
Per the terms of.
Of the town clerk's compensation.
But not necessarily. If we had a, a slow year, no inflation, no cost of living for the town, might not appear necessarily.
Well, this isn't, this isn't COLA. COLA is built into Article 12.
No, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, as it's currently written.
But let's just assume there was no COLA in a year and there was no merit in a year because of, you know, budget restrictions.
Benefit increases.
But I'm just saying you don't have, you don't have to necessarily.
I'm sorry to add another complication, but this comes out.
Yeah.
It refers to all of the benefits. Does that include vacation?
It's in the employee manual. That's captured in the employee manual.
Does it include vacation?
And the, oh, that's interesting, does it include vacation?
How is it possible to have vacation when you are not responsible for your hours?
Is the dollar amount included, the dollar amount, Article 13, does that include the increase to the vacation time and whatnot, sick leave payout?
There is no.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Well, isn't that based on a full year with vacation and sick time?
It's based on a full year.
Right.
It's based on 40 hours a week.
8297 doesn't take account of vacation.
No, it's, it's saying, it, it would be assuming that the town clerk works 40 hours a week and would only be taking a maximum of 40 hours a week in vacation time.
Well, I think we all understand that is not a good assumption.
But they're, they would, according, per the employee manual, they couldn't take.
They are not subject to the employee manual.
But this, this Article 12 makes them subject.
Makes them subject.
Respect.
It can't make them subject to the employee manual. All it can do is say, look at the employee manual and cover that. But you can't do that with vacation because they don't have, they, they don't have hours. You can't tell the town clerk what hours to work. They make their own hours.
Town's gotten a deal. They've gotten a really good deal over these past 14 years.
So if this doesn't include vacation, then it's right.
Right? Well, then we would be.
What it says is all benefits that the others give.
I can't, I actually can't see it. Could you just scroll it up just a smidge?
It's, yeah, it's right there.
Oh, I was looking at 13, sorry.
Yeah, we're talking about a merit-based increase, salary increase.
I know, can you just roll it up a little bit, Nicole?
Yeah, they're.
Just the way.
It's just. I'm not going to stand.
You're talking.
Scroll down.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's the problem. I get to the bottom of the page and it jumps to the next.
Perfect.
Okay, perfect. So the cost that I calculated in this is, uh, the salary adjustment and the effect on social security employer owed benefits and the Hampshire retirement system owed benefits, and if it makes it clear, we could say social security benefits and the Hampshire retirement employer contributions, as opposed to the taxes and benefits.
I, I think that makes sense because it's clear what it covers. Because saying benefits right now is not clear. Because vacation is a benefit they give, but it's not eligible for the town clerk.
Does anybody need to call their babysitter and tell them it's going to be a law?
That would be a challenge. I'm just suggesting we know next week and we just got to get home.
This is nothing of political time and board.
It's got to be figured out, right? It's been let go for, you know, previous administrations and.
Yeah, exactly.
I've, I've got to say that if the DRA approved it as written and the town council approved it as written, there's a reason for that that's beyond me personally. And I prefer to.
Default.
Let the, the experts have their say.
I don't want to say town council is necessarily an expert. They're looking at it and saying, you're not doing anything illegal.
That's the same idea.
You know, they're not actually saying it's accomplishing what we want to accomplish.
Maybe Lily and Nicole can take the conversation to another, fine tune this.
Yeah, I was.
For next week, we can finalize it.
Let me, let me, let me come up with some different hypothetical warrant articles that would.
I think we're going to, let me just, I don't see any, maybe, together, a second.
Yeah, I'll come up with some different hypothetical warrant articles and see what it, see what it looks like. Okay, establishing a town force, we're all okay with this, right?
I'd like to discuss this.
Um, everything else, I don't believe there's a single thing here that has a dollar amount directly attached to it. We need to readopt these tax credits in order to keep them, otherwise it will revert to the minimum of $50 a year.
Didn't they drop them last year?
No, they changed the wording, which requires every town in New Hampshire to, um, to readopt them. I forget exactly what the wording change was. This happened almost a year ago now. But yeah, we all have to go through and review this. South Peterborough Tax and Commitment Finance District is just adding additional parcels into South Peterborough TIP district and removing one from the downtown TIP district and moving it into the South Peterborough TIP district. This will make it so that the TIP, South Peterborough TIP district will not only be able to afford all of the critical infrastructure projects that are in the plan, all those roads, bridges and culverts, but will, and water mains, but will also be able to afford some of the, um, the nicer amenities that the TIP advisory committee would like to have. All, all of this without any bounding whatsoever. And then the last one is the budget committees, um, try to religion.
Perfect, I guess.
We just comment on that, but we discussed this, uh, previously and had a few amendments made, and then there were some changes made by the lawyers to clarify some legal language, and, uh, I've read it closely, it looks fine to me.
No other warrant articles, it's sort of worse than the increase in the budget.
Better have them all.
As a voter, I'd like to say.
Maybe for the purposes of the moderator.
So are you suggesting they have them all on the ballot? You kind of, you know, consistent about that too.
Making fun of the number.
Could you consolidate the veterans credit to one or no?
No, because they're, they're under two separate RSAs, so they have to be readopted.
There's a slew of zoning.
I know, but I haven't gotten any of those in, so. I, I don't know if it's going to be a six or an eight-page ballot.
Oh, my God.
So are we going to schedule a, uh?
Right? We thought it was hard emptying those boxes out before, Linda.
So I think everybody feels this all should go on the ballot regardless?
No, I think we should get together next, uh, Tuesday.